For Monday, September 25th, we're starting at 6:30 with a public hearing. And the first thing I want to do is rearrange the agenda a little bit on the advice of legal counsel. We are going to push the public hearing to the first item to be followed immediately by the first item of new business which refers to the public hearing. And so I would look for a motion to change the agenda to that effect and then to rejoin the agenda once we have those two items behind us.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's what we will do. So I will call the public hearing to order for the consideration of the removal of a dangerous building at 479 Rockland Street, which is map 17, lot 79. And to begin the public hearing, we will have a presentation on behalf of the town by the planning director and the code officer about the situation and what has transpired over the last period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Jamie Franco from the Planning and Development Department. It's the worst situation to be in. We don't like to get to this point where we are recommending to the select board to take some form of corrective action regarding property maintenance. And thank you to Valerie Kelly for being here tonight. I'm sure it's a stressful process to be on her side of. We have a building at 479 Rockland Street where the door, front door has been open for a few years. There've been a lot of difficulties that the code officer will run you through from his personal experience. From my perspective, getting the process to this point, getting to know the file leading up to a June meeting with the select board, basically I found that the standard is somewhat, somewhat subjective and yet lands squarely in the select board's authority as the municipal office in charge of the general welfare of the community. Here is an excerpt from the statute regarding dangerous constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment, or is otherwise dangerous to life or property. The select board may, after notice and hearing on this matter, adjudicate the same to be a nuisance or dangerous. And then, of course, we reviewed to the town, with the town attorney, some examples of that corrective action, up to and including removal of the building at the town's expense and the attachment of a lien or a special tax that would run with the property to cover that expense. Beyond that, Scott, I propose to run through those slides with you so that you can tell me when you want to advance. I'll come over and get the track pad. And Scott will review his conversations firsthand with the owner and his inspections over the last few years.
And while he's getting his device, my name is Scott Bickford. I'm the code enforcement officer, plumbing inspector, and health officer for the town of Rockport. Back in 2015, I had received complaints about the structure and the fact that it was abandoned, not being utilized. So I did visit it. I took some photographs. And if I'm not mistaken, the select board has a copy of those photographs. So that can be just part of the record. I sent a letter to Valerie Kelly on October 14, 2015. At that time, I was telling her that I had some concerns about the structure and the way it looked and what was her plans to do to fix this and bring it back into livability. On January 11th, I wrote another letter, and I was a little bit more exacting that it was a nuisance and likely applicable to the property as being a nuisance, and that I was going to be preparing a legal notice for the property since she had not contacted In 2015, September 10th, I again told her the property was in disrepair and it appeared to be abandoned and perhaps unsafe. Rodents are likely to be present also. And hopefully, the problem could be fixed rather easily and no other action would be necessary. And I would appreciate hearing from her within a week. I talked to her by telephone, a cellphone, actually, which I believe the town clerk had that available for me. And she told me she would clean out the property during April of the year 2016. This is communication by phone. And I asked her to give me a date certain and writing or by email within 30 days for We finally got to January of 2017, and I sent a notice of violation, I'm sorry, June 20th, 2017, January 17, I'm sorry, that I had, I reviewed the notice of violation, I reviewed the letters that I had sent her and the dates, and told her that I was moving ahead with legal action. And I told her what she needed to do to bring it into compliance. And I got no response. And then finally, on June 20th, 2017, I gave notice of the impending action as a final plea to try to get something to happen. And still, no response. So I took it to the select board, and there was a review of the structure and what actions to proceed with, which brings us here tonight for a public hearing to make a determination.
And in a nutshell, Scott, some of your observations about the structure are?
The front door is open, has been for a long time. He's looking for the front door.
Yeah, looking for the photo.
Can't find the front door, can you? And, oh, back up one. And there is a car that shows up in the yard. She did tell me that car would be removed, and it did become removed. So that happened. But behind the car, you see the entryway is collapsed. And up on top, you see there's a tree on top of the structure. To the right, you'll see broken windows, broken glass.
Just so we know, those are the older pictures and these are the newer ones. You can see the deterioration.
Can you find the skirting, Jamie?
Uh, the skirting, is that the 2017 photo?
Yes, the skirting is 2017. These photos I took over a period of 2015 to 2017, and they're all basically the same because there were no changes.
Those, uh, those photos from this year are in the select board's packet but not in this slide show.
All right, and the packet then would be showing the entry on the ground, which is, you should have one more photo of that.
Yeah.
Go to your next photo on 2017.
I think it's down at the bottom. It's under other photos on the...
They're in the, they're in the packet. You should be able to scroll down through the letters and see them.
Yeah.
Oh, it might be in the select board packet, which is...
At the website?
No.
Oh, you're in the packet now, I think. Just scroll down through, just scroll down through there.
Right, right now, and thank you for the, taking the time to get this in the record. Right now, I'm in a selection PDF that's separate from the packet. I believe you can get that.
It's just a portion. It's only three pages. It's not the packet.
A short story, I guess we could provide the photos from our packet if anybody wanted to see them.
Right.
And also the short story is you can see the deterioration 2015 to 17.
Right. And there is no skirting on a lot of the structure. That's, that's from 2017. You have a picture of that skirting missing. So it's a place for rodents to survive pretty easily. Tree on top, I'm not sure that, yeah, that's still in the 17. Shows the tree on, tree branches on top of the structure.
Over there, you just went by them.
Those windows are in disrepair.
Back on track.
So what flows from all of these penetrations being open all the time is quick decay, animals taking up residence, and a slightly increased risk that others would be endangered by the structure.
Exactly. The garage, even though it's in the photograph, I have no issues with the garage. And I did not go around the building. I stuck to curlicet, going the path that would normally be taken to get, get to the structure without going around corners and so forth. So everything is from the front. I don't know what's out back. I have no idea.
I have a quick question, procedural question for Jamie and our chairman. I understand the need to get this all as part of the public record, but it is all part of the public record at the website and our agenda and everything. The real crux of the matter that I'm interested in is hearing from Ms. Kelly.
And that'll be next. And once, once the town is through, then we'll invite the property owner to come up and make a presentation or any comments that they would like to. And then we'll invite members of the public to come up. And then after we close the public hearing, then we will have our discussion deliberation. So that's the procedure.
Anything specific you wanted to hit on?
Yes, just a couple of small points. I had talked to her twice by phone. So she was aware that I was doing something. All of her mail, she did not receive. Some of it came back. I used the address that I had from the tax cards. I was not given a different address. And to date, she has not contacted me about tonight's hearing. I've got secondhand information from the town clerk, but my request was that she contact the planner or the code officer for tonight's hearing. I know she's here tonight, but she's not yet made contact or spoke to me. So I would entertain any questions, if there are any.
I mean, I think what we'll do is, is here next, if you guys are through with your presentation, we'll hear from the property owner, and then we'll hear from members of the public, and then we'll close the public hearing. During our deliberations, the board may come back and ask specific questions of you or...
And just, just to respond to your point, Doug, about the process, the select board is put to a burden of making some findings of fact. And we certainly don't need to repeat every line of the, of the material that's been submitted on paper. But we hope that through this hearing process, the select board's in a better position to, to make those findings. And it's totally separate from the action in your regular agenda to perhaps select some corrective action. So now you're gathering facts, and that's the end of staff's presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the property owner here this evening? Do you wish to come up and, and address the board?
Hi.
Evening.
I'm Valerie Kelly, and I have no problem with removing the property. It was not my intention to let it go this far. And it was brought to my attention. And I am sorry I didn't know I was supposed to get ahold of you just recently. I was told about tonight, and I did make every effort to get here. I didn't mean for it to get this far. He's right, we did have conversations. I did, I was aware, and I had every intentions of taking care of it. A lot of things got in the way, and it didn't get done. So I have no problems with, the plan was, we discussed to demo it, and that's still perfectly fine.
What town do you live in now?
Camden.
Oh, you do, okay. And we have your correct mailing address and all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do you have the financial means to?
That may be questionable.
When we get to our deliberation, we can speak.
Right, but I want to hear from her if she has the financial means to do this so we don't have to do it.
I don't know exactly the amount it will take, but I am willing to work with people to figure it out. I...
Do you have the financial means to have this removed?
Probably.
Okay.
Again, I'm unsure of the amount, so I'm not sure. I mean, it can be taken care of, yes, one way or another.
And I also have some questions, but maybe I'll wait till the deliberations. Will you be staying through this entire public hearing?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be better, I think. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Now, there's anybody from the public who wishes to comment on this situation? It's free to come up and do that. We would ask that you come up to the lectern and introduce yourself, tell us who you are, and make any comments that you'd like to on this situation.
Hi, I'm Conrad Hare, and I own the property next to her. One of the concerns for me and the neighbors in the neighborhood probably would be approximately a year ago, a year and a half ago from Rocky Palm, we had a building set on fire up there that, don't know how it happened, and it's the same concern with this property here. It's, it's a tinderbox waiting to be, you know, anybody could torch it just for the heck of it. And that's the big concern for myself and our neighbors.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to make a comment on this situation?
My name is Rebecca Riplich, and my complaint is it devaluates my place. I'm trying to keep it as good as I can. And I feel that it depreciates my place because people go by there and they say, what a mess, you know? Plus, the rats have been in there like crazy, and I have, I have set more traps, and I don't like it. It smells, it looks terrible for our community, and I'd like to see it gone, cleaned up. I really would.
Are you two on either side? So you're one of butter and you're the other? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we're next door to her.
Yeah.
If you'd like to speak, you do need to come up to the, to the mic.
So, so I think it devaluates my property.
Sure.
Because I keep mine mowed very good, and I try to keep it as good as possible. And I don't like the debris and the smell and the rats and stuff, so that's my complaint.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak? Seeing nobody, then I will declare the end of the public hearing at this point, and the board will then go into considering item A under new business, which is our discussion and vote regarding proceeding with this particular situation. As I understand it, we need to make a determination as to whether this is a dangerous building or not, according to the statute and according to our town charter. Once we've made that determination, then we can apply some corrective action. We can, there are a number of things that we can do. We can order the building removed. We can negotiate with the property owner for a date certain to do it by. We can talk about the possibility of, of having the town take care of it and then put a lien on the property for that, that cost. That's an option that we can consider, particularly if, if the property owner is struggling with, with the financial means to do it. We can do that, so.
I would make a motion that the select board declare this building a dangerous building.
Okay, we do need to cite the statute.
Citing...
Which is, I believe we do. The statute is here, so we have to, we have to give a reason why it is a dangerous building. So here's a copy of the statute.
Well, first of all, I would say that the building located at 479 Rockland Street, map 17, lot 79, is the building in question for the minutes, and... And that its current presence constitutes a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence.
That's, that's enough.
Period.
Pursuant to the law.
Pursuant to section, title 17, chapter 91, subchapter 4, subsection 2851.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to declare this as a dangerous building according to the statute as cited by Dr. Cole. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I have a quick procedural question, and that is, because this is like a, a legal matter, I was not here for the entirety of the deliberations. I have read all the information that Scott went over, but I just don't want to make a vote and then have someone say you weren't here for all of the...
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So noted.
So if a brilliant person in the front row...
I mean, I guess it would be up to, it would be up to the board to decide that question. You missed a very small portion of the start of it.
And I had already read over all the material.
So I'm comfortable in having, having you participate in the vote. Is there any dissension among the board about that? Okay. I think we're okay. But thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. So my questions are just around, I mean, because it's pretty clear that it's in disrepair and that it's affecting the neighborhood. So my only real questioning is just trying to figure out the, the basic framework going forward with the owner in the best possible way. So it's removed, and yet we've got a good understanding of how the repayment's going to go.
Right. And we can do that. We can vote on the motion to declare it a dangerous building and then can continue to, to find a mitigation strategy, whatever that might be. And as I say, we do have some options open to us in that. So we can talk about that.
Yeah, and the only two things I had is, is just trying to create a better communications line with Scott or the town, just so as we don't have to chase each other around. And I'm, I'm curious as to if it did fall onto the property owner to tear down or remove the building, what might their intentions be and what type of a timeframe, which then helps us better determine when we step in after giving them an opportunity.
Right. Well, what we can do is we can, as the, as the municipal office is, we can order the removal of a building by a date certain. And, and when we get to that point after we vote on...
Let's declare it a dangerous building.
We can talk to the owner about the possi, about what the timeline could be. We can bring up the option of having the town remove the building at a cost, which would then be assessed to the property as a special tax, and maybe that's an easier way for the property. I don't know. We'll have to talk to the property.
I'd like to move the question.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion as presented? Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, we need to decide, and you've got the finding that you need, I believe, Jamie, from our action here. We do need to make some sort of a plan as to the removal of the building. And I think that from the comments that I heard in the public hearing from the owner, that there is agreement that the building needs to go. The question now becomes, do we want to, and perhaps the property owner could, could come up again and engage in a little bit of dialogue with us. The question, I guess, the first question I would have for, for Ms. Kelly would be, do you want to undertake the removal of this building on your own if we give you a date certain? Is that the best way to do it for you? Or would it be easier for the town to come in and take care of it and then, and then assess the cost to you? It would be a, a special tax, is what our attorney tells us, it would be a special tax, and we wouldn't make any, we would bill our costs, basically. It would depend on whether our public works department was able to go in and do it or whether we had to subcontract it out. So I would just be interested in your thoughts on how you would like to proceed.
I guess my, the, my first thought would be the most inexpensive way to do it, whether I do it privately or do it through the town. I don't know which would be...
I suspect if you do it yourself, you're going to get it the least expensive because you have some control over cost. If you leave it up to the town, it'll be what it is and...
Okay.
But I think the date's going to be important. Do you have a date in mind?
I didn't have anything in particular, no. Sooner the better.
I think that's the, would be the sentiment of the board, too, is it's gone on long enough that we would like to get it taken care of as soon as possible. But on the other hand, what we don't want to do is, is create an order and then, and then put a date on it that's unrealistic for you to take care of. We don't want to, we don't want to get into that situation of, again, then having another violation because the building wasn't able to be removed by the date that we choose. So it would be good for us to have some idea of, of when you think it could happen by.
Do you have a reasonable deadline that you'd like to put on it?
Could I throw something out there?
Sure.
So if the town was to remove it, you, it's kind of wiped off of your plate except for paying for it. And we'd jump on it and we'd get it taken care of quickly. The question that I have is, with a consent to remove provision with you and your, in your agreement, we can do a special building, a special tax. My question is, for someone who can answer it, is, is that tax assessed in one year or is it repaid over time? Because that way we could get it taken care of quickly, and instead of one payment upfront, I don't know about the procedures of it, but if it could be paid off...
Would it go on the taxes yearly or...
A couple of years, that may ease at least that initial burden on you.
The way I understand it, and I would defer to...
I don't know.
I believe it'll be in one...
It would be one, it would be one payment, a special, special tax outside of the property tax, and it would be, I think, due and payable pretty quickly.
Do we have the flexibility to split it in half into two, two years?
I mean, it becomes subject to the same procedures as, as an unpaid tax lien, basically. So, I mean, I, I guess, the answer to the question, I suppose the board could, could decide to do that.
I don't think so.
I don't know why. I'd like to get back to the deadline question.
It sounds like it'd be easier if I could just do it and...
Okay, good. Again, to encourage you to participate in this, what do you think is a reasonable deadline?
And we're at the end of September now. Is, is November 1?
Well, let's see what she has to say. I'd like her to be part of the process.
Appreciate that, but I'm willing to work with whatever date you want to come up with.
Please, give us a date.
As I said, what we don't want to have is to set a date that becomes unrealistic.
Okay.
The only thing I'm afraid of is if we try to tax our public works going into a season that they're going to be getting geared up. They're going to be busy through the winter and into the spring, so if we utilize them, it's going to be, it's going to be a period of time. So I'm happy to hear that, you know, maybe by the end of the year.
Nothing says we can't sub it out, can we?
That would be up to the public works department. Steve is here. Do we want to...
The important thing, I think, though, is that whatever you decide, you decide it with a date specific, and then if it's not done, then it, it authorizes me to take action after that.
Right.
Have you, have you already contacted or talked to anybody about this type of a project?
I did originally. There were, I, but that didn't work, so I never did.
Did you have a cost estimate at that time? Did you have a cost estimate at that time?
I was in the process of getting there.
Okay, so you never, you never did hear a number?
No, they didn't follow through, so that was part of...
Well, she has suggested the end of the year. How does the board feel about that?
I wonder what role the weather would play. Suppose it gets covered, we have blizzards, and it's covered in ice and snow. I would feel much more comfortable and sensitive... I would feel much more comfortable, I'm sensitive to the situation for the surrounding property owners. I, do you think you could do this by November first?
Just have to, you know, get ahold of somebody, and it depends on their schedule, basically, that's why I just thought if I had a.
And I, one of the things that I do wonder, and of course, I can, I understand why everyone would want this to be done for the least expensive, in the least expensive way possible. I don't think, I think we're all just sort of speculating about whether or not that's having the town's public works department do it, or whether it's you doing it yourself.
I think it probably would be.
For you to do it yourself.
To agree that it could very well be cheaper.
Okay. I mean, I would, I would, if we could find an agreement around November first, I think that that gets us in before the bad weather, might make it impossible, and resolves the matter more quickly.
And, and I'd ask that the first week of October, you might touch base with us to let us know where you are in that process of finding someone.
In two weeks.
Well, the end, first of November is in. You know, so.
A lot of months, so that.
So, I'm just, I, I'm just trying to help you make sure you get on the road to helping us.
And I would only second that because what I, I wouldn't want to put the town in the position of is come November first, and, you know, for one, whatever reason, you know, wasn't able to be removed. Then we have to go and try to get public works or someone else to do it with possibly winter setting in, so really trying to make sure that we protected the neighborhood, done it in a timely manner, but. So, I would appreciate that, date specific for a check in.
Should I be able to speak with Steve about the possibility of. Input on who to call and what he suggests, and would he have any input on that?
I'll let Steve, if he wants to, I'll let Steve chime in and answer that.
Oh, come to, come to the mic, Steve. No, sitting in the back row. I know.
Having been involved in several of these demolitions in the past, a couple of things to consider. And I need to know a little more information than I've just gathered here in the last few minutes. All the structures?
No.
Yeah, I'm curious about that, too. The garage?
Just the mobile home, the garage.
Just the mobile home. There are, when you demo, demo a mobile home, there are certain things that you have to do. To dispose of it, there are several options to dispose of it. Depends on how you and the property owner devise the plan. In the past, the town has hired a metal demolition contractor to set a dumpster there. We peel the skin off in it. There is some, and it depends on the market, but there is some recompensation, some salvage value there. The frame has some salvage value. The rest of it is totally demoed. You would have to talk to Mr. Gara to make sure that fits into their schedule of demoing onto their landfill, because that's where it's gonna go. And anytime, it's a, it's not a big job, but it's a medium job to demo that and get it onto the landfill. Public Works has the equipment and the expertise to do it. Having not been on that lot for a year or so, Scott sent me over there some time ago. Yeah. It might actually be in the best interest of the town to wait till the ground is starting to freeze. You can get a lot better job of demoing on hard ground than you can on soft ground, 'cause that lot, particularly behind the trailer, is sloping and. Mashy type land. So, there are a whole bunch of things to consider. Efficiency against time, efficiency against the cost, and how you wanna work that out with the property owner. If, if she chooses to go the private contractor, she may choose to demo it out, and that, that takes some coordination. Public Works has a little more ability to coordinate that type of thing than, than a private individual would. So, I'm just giving you some heads up. We're looking, average double wide consists of one container load of scrap metal with a frame. And any other, there's probably a fuel tank there sinking into the ground somewhere. A bunch of things that have to be done, and I would have to explore that lot a little further than we have sitting here. So, but there are, it's probably seven of our seven yard truckloads to take the rest of the insulation, the framework, the linoleum. When we pull it apart, there's a hot air furnace in there, we demo that out. There may be some plumbing fixtures, generally, it's not worth trying to pull the plumbing fixtures out, they just go to the landfill. But that's something that Mr. Gara has to, or his representative has to accept before anybody can take it there, whether she hires a contractor, or we do it, or we hire a contractor. All those arrangements have to be made.
In your experience, Steve, if, if the property owner were to engage a contractor, let's say, next week, what would the timeframe be on average? And I'm not gonna hold you to it, but just a general idea of.
If, if she would, we have contractors sitting right here in the room, but if we have, if, if she hires people that look to do this type of work, this is not something that every contractor's gonna look to do, but there are people that demo buildings and demo trailers. You're talking about a three-day job at the outside. Big, big excavator, large trucks, larger than public works trucks, it's probably a day or a little bit more, depending on how you wanna address the area after the structure's left. And, again, if, if a garage isn't going, that's gonna slow the process down, 'cause you probably have to work around that building to save it as well, so.
Steve, excellent information, some of the best I've heard here tonight. You did raise an interesting point, though. Would any contractor doing this job normally be bonded in terms of, you know, the oil tanks spilling, or, you know, not doing a satisfactory job? I mean, if we leave it up to the owner, of course.
Are you asking Steve Beveridge, or are you asking the public works director?
I'm asking the public works director to look after the interests of the town. I mean, you know what I'm saying, is that, you know, an owner can go out and hire their son-in-law to.
They could hire their son-in-law if he's got, he can go rent a backhoe from Pro Rental. I mean, that's, that's all kinds of ways to do this.
What, what performance guarantees do we have to ask for?
If, if we were hiring, if we were hiring a contractor for the town.
No, if the owner's gonna do it herself, how do we make sure that we have performance guarantees from that independent?
The only performance guarantee that we can ask for is that they, that they have a million dollars worth of liability insurance. That's what we ask all of our contractors, we can't ask for more than that.
Okay, and would that be adequate, or I'll ask the town manager?
You know, I don't, if she's doing it herself, if, if she's hiring a contractor on private property to remove the building herself. I don't know that we're, we're responsible for how the removal gets done.
No, I think at the, at the end of the day, we would be, we would only, I mean, our code officer would go out and determine after the fact that the job was done or not.
And at the, at the outset, he would issue a permit for demolition, provided he had confidence in the technical and financial ability of the applicant to pursue it.
Okay, so there is that safeguard. Okay.
And one more quick question, if you can, from the, I'll just ask you to holler up, Steve. If, if public works were asked to do this, how long a job would it be for them?
Public Works crew?
Yeah, providing they didn't have anything else to do for some period of time.
Like, like I said, our machinery is, is small, but we have some pretty experienced people. I, I would think. I'd really like to walk around and look at it, but if I said we were three workdays, we oughta be able to knock it out.
Okay.
I mean, I, and that's, we're just standing here.
Yeah, I understand, understand.
So, December first is still a good period.
We have, the way the weather's been, we have a couple of weeks of projects ahead of us, and then we wanna start gearing up, like you said, for winter. That's a, that's a full-time job for a couple of weeks.
No, would, would the ground be frozen enough like you had suggested by November?
That would be the ideal situation, to have some frost in the ground, but obviously, November first is not frost in the ground here, so you've already cast that aside, so we're looking at something else, so.
Not yet. Haven't cast November first yet, have we?
No, we haven't yet.
No.
But I, I, I do like the idea of trying to get it done before, because if, if the property owner, I mean, she could go out and look for a contractor over the next week and come back and say, you know what? I just can't find anybody to do it, I'd rather have the town take care of it, even if the cost is a little bit higher, and I, we don't wanna box ourselves in with that, so I am sensitive to doing it.
Well, is that an option?
I think so, yeah, I think, I mean, we can, basically, the bottom line is, we're, we're gonna have a motion at some point to, to order the removal of the building by a date certain. As long as you're working with Scott and Jamie, this is just me speaking right now, the rest of the board will have to chime in.
Keep talking.
But I, I think we're gonna be okay with it, as long as there's progress being made, that's the whole point in all this. And I think that, you know, a November one date is okay, I, I would be willing to push it to November fifteen, but that's up to the rest of the board meeting, 'cause that would, that would get us. Get out before Thanksgiving.
Well, I was just looking to seventeenth as a Friday, so, I mean, I'd be happy to bump it out a couple of weeks, too. That way, nobody gets hurried and everybody gets the best.
Does that, just, does that give us enough time, Steve, if after the seventeenth? If it, if, if the seventeenth comes and it's our responsibility, will we have enough time on the seventeenth? I know that we can't predict the weather, even with Ken's help, but would that give us enough time? Are you gearing up for winter and you've got Sanders in the trucks and?
After the seventeenth of October?
November.
No, no, November. No, I'm saying, but.
Once we get the plumbing here on, we can, we can still slide the, I mean, it's typical for public works to slide the standards in now, weather dependent, so it's not, it just takes a block of time to get the trucks imminently ready.
Okay, so you.
So, we can still do that, so, you know.
Well, here's what I might suggest, and I'm not gonna make the motion, somebody else can make it, but perhaps we could have a motion that gives the, the November seventeenth as the deadline for removal, but also requires a, a status report. You know, about October tenth or fifteenth or something like that, so that we have some idea, so that, that would give you enough time, I would think, you know, over the next couple of weeks, to try to engage a contractor. And if you run up against a, a wall at that point, then you can come back to us at that point, and we would, public works would then have more time to, to deal with it.
Or even if I could just talk to Steve a little more about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
What he might suggest for people?
I'd consider making a motion with some help.
Okay.
Wait a minute, hold on a second. Linda?
Question?
Yeah.
Typically, and Scott knows, when we demolish a trailer, mobile home, or it's moved, they have to have a piece of paper, and it states on there that all the real estate taxes are paid prior to that. And I know that doesn't have a lot of value, but I'm looking at her tax status. She has two liens on that property, we're ready to foreclose in March. So, what happens with that? Does she have to pay all those real estate taxes? Because typically, that's what the law is.
Because once, in theory, once you, once the structure is removed, then we have less leverage, in theory.
Well, in that case, and if it's the law, in my opinion, the answer is yes.
We would have to check on that, I think. I, I'm not certain of that law. Is it, so if they go to receive a demolition permit from.
From Scott, he has to make sure that the real estate taxes are paid before he can issue that, and they're not.
Okay.
I have some stuff sketched out, if you.
I guess.
It's pretty easy, I think.
So, the answer, in my opinion, is yes.
So, they would have, the taxes would have to be paid, which is, I guess that goes back to another question to ask the property owner, given that, that the taxes would have to be paid before a demo permit can be issued. Do you still have, would you still have the means to, to hire a contractor to do it?
Without stating what the back taxes are, do you want to look and, and see, and if you can financially afford that?
Even if the town did it, the same.
Those are just your taxes, those are your property taxes.
Right, but even if the town was, I'm sorry.
I think that you're asking the right question, Ms. Kelly. We thought we asked the town attorney everything, but it doesn't seem to comport with his advice to suggest that the town could not take action on the basis of tax liability. But we had better find out.
Well, I, I think the difference is if she removes it or if we remove it.
I would think a select board order would, would trump that concern, because you've taken the, a view that the town will be in a better position, financially and otherwise, if, if you order some action.
It essentially will draw a line in the sand, says this is what's, this is what's, this is what we can collect on, and adds on that, the charge to remove that building on top of what the taxes already were.
Right, but the question is, does that tax liability have to be satisfied before the demolition can go forward? Does it make any difference whether it's the town doing it, or whether she's applying for a demo permit? Scott?
What Linda is, what Linda is talking about is the MV forty-seven. MV is for motor vehicle, and the reason behind it is the land is taxed, mobile home is taxed, and it's mobile because it's got wheels, and it could disappear on a weekend, so the state has a law that that gets taxed separately, right? So, that's the reason for it. She's actually paying for the land in one tax, and for the mobile home in the other tax. So, maybe you can do something with just the mobile home, I don't know, that'd be a good question for the tax assessor. I really don't know.
So, what's the procedure if, if the town undertakes the demolition? Is there a demo permit that's required for that, the same as if she? So, so would that also have the requirement of the taxes? Taxes have to be paid before we can get rid of this building.
Before it's demoed or moved.
And it's the building we're talking about, that, how the taxes, so it's not the land, it's the building.
Is there a, I guess I would go back to Linda on that one, does it?
Yeah, I'll go back here, too.
Which, can, can we separate that out, or?
I would have to read. Typically, what I would do is they, if they come in in their two thousand seventeens, were the only ones outstanding, I would only collect what's due on the mobile home. But this time, there's two liens on it, ready for foreclosure in two or three months. This has never happened before, so I, I can't answer that, it says all taxes must be paid.
Okay, well.
One more thought, Ken. On this point, the town attorney did offer advice, the, the fact that we may, the, the select board may be in a position to take an action with respect to ownership of this property on the basis of a tax foreclosure at a later date. Or on the basis of this finding that it's a dangerous building. Setting both of those up and putting both of your, those tools in your hands is exactly what the town attorney recommends. So, if your, if your date's certain by which Ms. Kelly would have had to resolve the problem. If that passes and it hasn't happened, I think you could structure your order such that either. You proceed to foreclosure, you don't need to, you could be silent on that with your order, or the special tax or lien that you would attach would make the town whole for that loss that the. The MV forty-seven is supposed to look out for. And something that I don't actually know and would also like guidance on from the town attorney is, is there a difference between moving a mobile home to another property and removing it with respect to this issue? I don't know that.
I think, I mean, to answer your suggestion of, you know, the, the tax lien and the other, it seems to me that in that case, we would have to wait until the foreclosure happened in March to just, to demo, demo the building.
I just got a response back from town council to my question, can we or she remove the building if the owner owes property taxes on the property, and he said yes?
We or she? Yes to which one?
That's what I'm gonna ask.
I just wanted to throw something out there, so, two weeks and one day from today, because it's Columbus Day on Monday, our next regular select board meeting is October tenth, which is two weeks and one day from today. So, whatever the motion is that's gonna be made, I'm inclined to, to have it include some sort of, you know, Ms. Kelly's been working with the town, there's a plan on payment, there's some of these tax things unresolved, we've got permit stuff in place. We've got permit stuff in place, she's worked with Public Works, she knows if she's going to go private or through Public Works. And then, when we get an update on the tenth, we'll already be in an official meeting, and if we need to take further action, because for one reason or another it's not making sense, we can address that then.
Yeah, I think that, in my opinion now, that we could have a motion that sets, sets that November seventeenth with a report on October tenth, as you say.
Yep.
And then the other issues we're just going to have to deal with as they come along. I don't think we can resolve that tax issue this evening. I don't know what the, the end is going to be about how the property owner finds a contractor or not, but I think, in my opinion, we need to sort of set this in motion at this point, because I think we want to get that building out of there sooner rather than later. That's what we've heard tonight from all parties.
And could I just, for the, for the butters, and just a simple nod of the head one way or the other, is our, is our timeline of November seventeenth, does that, from everything you've heard about trying to firm up the ground, does that, does that seem all right with you all? We're trying to get it done as quick as we can, just, okay. And hopefully, it's before then.
All right, so I will await a motion.
Well, I've been rewriting. I would move that by November seventeenth, two thousand seven, Ms. Kel, two thousand seventeen. Thank you, remove the mobile home at four seventy-nine Rockland Street, map seventeen lot seventy-nine, in a proper permitted way with the town of Rockport, and report back to us on Octo- October tenth through seventeenth, uh, two seventeen, with her, uh, progress.
Have you got that, Linda?
I do.
Are you moving?
Do we have a?
Are you moving, you've moved that she will do something?
She will report back to us on October tenth with the progress she's made.
Would it make sense to slightly amend the motion, simply to say that if that condition is not met, we are authorizing the town manager to take appropriate action, because we've labeled this a dangerous building?
Correct.
Um, where does that town manager taking action occur, at October tenth or November seventeenth?
At, after November seventeen.
By the seventeenth.
Yeah, that, okay, that makes sense to me, then, yeah.
Yep. And if these conditions are not met by November seventeenth, then the town manager, we authorize. I, I second as amended.
Are you okay, Linda?
No, it was good.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to have the building removed by November seventeenth.
With all the proper permitting.
With all the proper permits, et cetera. And to have a progress report from the property owner on October tenth as to how things are proceeding.
At our select board meeting.
At, at or before, if she wanted to provide it in writing, that would be acceptable, to me, that would be acceptable.
Are we requiring her to come in on the tenth, or?
We're requiring a report from her, the way the motion's written. I don't, I don't think the motion requires her to be here, but it does require a report.
Just report to us by the tenth.
That could be a report through Scott or Jamie. It could be, if she wanted to come and see us again, we'd be happy to have her come again. If she wanted, if she wanted to provide a written report, that would be fine, but just some communication so that in time for that October tenth meeting, that's the way I understand the motion.
And if after the seventeenth of November, there is no progress, then we proceed.
Then the town manager would proceed to, to deal with it as expected, and the.
Can we have a second?
Yeah.
Tom's second, yeah.
Is Ms. Kelly still here?
Yeah.
Yeah. What, what if, you're saying by the seventeenth, actions will be taken, but as long as we're moving towards the goal, and it's not completed by the seventeenth?
Seventeenth is the day.
The town manager will have discretion at that point.
Right.
If, for example, if, if, if you come back on October tenth and say, I've got a contractor, they can come in, they can't get it done till the twentieth or whatever, then the town manager will have discretion. After the seventeenth, the town manager will have discretion to do whatever he deems is in the best interest of the town, but, you know, knowing the town manager, they do, I think that.
Default to the town doing it at that point.
It could.
But we'll know before the tenth, because we'll have a plan by the tenth.
If there's something ongoing, I, I don't think anybody's, I don't think anybody is interested in, in making it more difficult than it is. So if there's something underway and there's some, something proceeding, I think that.
We'll have the plan by the tenth, so we'll know by then.
So, and again, we've had a lot of talking up here, but I want you up at the microphone. You understand the dates and the requirements.
Yes, notify you by the tenth of.
Or before, if you find out something before.
Right, by or before.
Just to, just to let us know how you're proceeding. Have you found a contractor?
Go on.
Yeah, you can talk to Scott or talk to Jamie.
And the deadline is?
The nineteenth.
Seventeenth.
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 I'm sure one of our town employees will send you an email or a memo or something with the dates on it.
Yeah, the seventeenth, and I'll be speaking with Steve.
And if before you leave this evening, if you could make sure that, that Jamie and/or Scott have ways to reach you, telephone, email, whatever's the best way, that would be terrific, I think, because we have had some difficulty in that way before. Okay, we have the motion on the floor, is there any further discussion on the motion?
I just want to make sure Jamie has what he needs for the notice of decision?
Definitely have what I need for the findings of fact. With respect to this motion and your decision, you haven't expressly said in the motion what type of corrective action you're authorizing the town manager to do. I think that's fine, but I wanted to be clear about that, because when we worked with the town attorney, we spoke of specific corrective actions. So if, if you were amenable to say that up to and including removing the building and attaching a special tax or lien on the property, that would make it clear that the action you're authorizing goes that far. Otherwise, I've got.
I think, I think, didn't Linda say in, in two or three months, we're going to foreclosure anyway?
Well, not till March.
Not.
March, two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, but I want to, I want to keep these things separated. They're, they're two separate issues, so I would actually, because I was trying to, I didn't want to gum up the works by saying, well, do we need to address how it will get paid for after the seventeenth, once Rick's got it? But I, I don't disagree at all with what Jamie said. Just that up to and including removal by the town and a special tax assessed.
So can, are, are, you made the motion, you guys made the motion second, are you comfortable with adding that at the end?
Wouldn't they have to make an amendment?
Yeah, okay, yeah, we do have the motion on the floor, so technically, we need to have a motion for an amendment.
First thing, you got to rescind your second.
No, 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 the motion can stand, we can, we can amend the motion. So we'll just have an amendment to the motion to add the language that Jamie talked about.
I think that's you.
So anybody can make it, somebody else can.
You, we've got the crafter.
I move that we add an amendment to the motion on the floor, and the amendment includes empowering the town manager to, on that date specific, November seventeenth, if it is not removed, to take all necessary actions up to and including removal of the building and assessing a special tax for payment.
Okay, have the motion on the amendment, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, the amendment is motion is moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on the amendment? So the way this will work, we'll have to vote on the amendment, and then we'll have to vote on the amended motion. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, if not, all in favor of the amendment? Okay, that's a unanimous vote, we now have the amended motion, any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor of that motion? Then that is a unanimous vote also, okay. Thank you all for bearing with us, that was a difficult discussion, but necessary. Okay, we now go back to our agenda and to announcements, minutes, meetings and announcements. We have minutes from the executive session of September eighteenth to consider and approve, and I await a motion on those.
I move to accept the minutes for the September eighteenth executive session as written.
A second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, those are approved. Announcements of upcoming meetings, our next regular select board meeting is Tuesday, October tenth, which we've already referred to, that'll be at seven o'clock here, it will be live streamed. We do have a capital improvement committee workshop on October twelfth at five P.M. The ad hoc water quality committee workshop is still up in the air, need to talk to the liaison to the conservation commission about that. Town office will be closed on Wednesday, October fourth, so that the staff can attend training at the main municipal association annual convention. So if you have business with the town office, keep in mind that October fourth, which is next Wednesday, the town office will not be open. Also be closed on Monday, October ninth for Columbus Day, and will open late on Tuesday, October tenth, for some employee training that will occur between eight and ten A.M., so if you have business that day, ten A.M. or after. Committee openings are given on the website.
Can I have a quick question for our esteemed chairman about calendars?
Next meeting. I'll have it for you next meeting. I have, I have fallen down on the job on that one.
Okay, that's.
If you wanted me to admit that in public, I admitted it in public.
No.
Can we skip agenda changes?
Uh, we haven't got there yet. The committee openings are, are noted, the one that I do want to make a special announcement of, and that is the MSC twenty-eight CSD school board. There has been a vacancy there due to a resignation. The charter does allow the select board to appoint a replacement to serve the remainder of the term. Anybody who's interested in that position, we would ask you to fill out a committee service application as soon as possible and to plan to be present at our October tenth meeting. The select board at that meeting will interview candidates, accept public comment, and make an appointment, and that's an important appointment, we don't want to have that vacancy last for any great length of time on the school board.
I'd like to state for the record that as I have a vested interest in the CSD, which is my employer, I will need to abstain from that process.
Okay, yeah, we are looking into counsel on that, and that actually will be decided by the board, but we'll, we'll deal with it at that point. So, but, yeah, it's something we have certainly thought about.
May force you.
Okay, agenda changes, do we have any agenda changes?
It was only one, one thought, seeing our, our parks committee chair here, and you are after all the committee applications for the comprehensive plan review. I didn't know if you wanted to go in front of the comp, plan applicants, or are you fine going after them?
I will be very long, thank you for asking.
I just didn't.
Okay, it's, we don't have terribly, terribly large number of the applicants here tonight, so I'm.
Okay.
What's the rest of the board, do you want to, I'm happy to move that up to, to the first item of new business.
Bring her up.
Sure, if you help Ken. Okay.
Well, you're not, you're not quite yet.
Not yet.
Sorry.
Public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment granted by permission of the board, all public comments should be briefed into the point. Do we have anybody who wishes to make public comment this evening? Seeing none, we will move on, we have already had the public hearing. Our town manager's update, not a full report this time, but just an update.
It's going to be very brief. First off, we have a special guest in the audience tonight, sitting in the back in the kind of peach colored shirt. Steve Beveridge has successfully endured, successfully completed thirty years of, of service to the town of Rockport, and it was his birthday yesterday, so two celebrations. So, Steve, if you could come up here.
Is that peach or salmon?
Give me a free postcard.
There you go, Steve, congratulations, there's more, hold on.
I was going to say, makes all those thirty years worth, and isn't it? Get a piece of paper.
Yeah, get a piece of paper.
See if you can guess what this is.
Box of chocolate.
It's a box of chocolate.
So Steve has given thirty years of his service to the town. Being a thirty year service person from a previous town, I know how hard that is and how time flies. It seems like you come in, it's going to be something you're going to do for a little bit of time, and then thirty years later, here you are. So you've done a great job, Steve.
And I might, I add, a lot of those thirty years have been in the middle of the night and on the weekends.
Yeah.
We really appreciate that.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Do you have a reward for the one who had it for up?
Yeah, I know. And is still putting up with him?
And a round of applause for Cheryl.
She's the one that answers the phone at twelve o'clock in the morning.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Excuse myself and don't get a bite me.
Yeah, you can escape right now, while you can.
And happy day after your birthday.
So a couple of, just brief things, the Mount Pleasant Street project is proceeding well. The good weather is helping us a lot, because it's been really dry, so they're able to get in there. So that's going along very well. The Anis Road Bridge is also proceeding nicely. We met with the residents last week, and we're working out of details of the bridge removal and replacement. I have to say that the residents up there, I think there are seven families that are actually up there, were very, very, very cooperative and helpful. I didn't expect that, I expected more pitchforks and torches, but they were very pleased that the bridge was getting taken care of, that we're coming up with a plan for, to allow them access. The company that's doing the work will, once the bridge is removed, will work twenty-four hours a day to get the new, new concrete planks in place, so that the, the time that they actually can't drive their cars in and out across the bridge will be very limited. Also, we.
Is there already like a little footbridge? There's a little footbridge.
Well, I don't know, did, did they get it in, they may have, they may have gotten in the footbridge already.
Well, I saw a footbridge, so if they were planning on putting one in.
Harbor ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was an old harbor ramp.
When it's closed, they'll be able to walk back and forth.
Right, and we've created a couple of parkings, a couple parking areas, so they can park cars on either side. They were very, the, the residents up there were very, very cooperative, and I, I have to say, I don't know, the thought of not being able to get to your house without having to walk across a bridge for two days, I might not have been as cooperative as they were, so they were, they were great to deal with.
Well, we appreciate their cooperation, and also, I mean, I'm sure they were pleased to be notified ahead of time and to be worked with, so that, it goes both ways. They're probably happy to have the bridge repaired and happy that they're being included in the plan, so that, that's very helpful, too.
Kern and Marcy softened up to it at the community hall supper prior, prior to your meeting, so they were aware.
That may have.
Probably got all the grapes out of them.
Yeah.
Still, just continue the road.
They, they were pleased that the bridge was going to get fixed, because the, the fear was that it would, that it would fail during the wintertime, when, would have been much worse. So, we also, we received a check from the school for fourteen thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars. This is the result of the, the, them getting more state subsidy back, which they're required to give fifty percent of that back to the municipality. So that for us amounted to fourteen thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars, which is a nice little.
Which school was that, Rick?
For, it comes from the.
SAD or the CSD?
I'm not sure, it's SAD.
SAD.
And is that, just curious, is that something that we typically get?
No, no.
So this is the first time, and how long we've gotten one of these?
I had to create an account, probably seven.
Yeah.
It was the CSD.
So it was.
CSD.
Was the CSD.
So it was a change in the way they calculate the state subsidy. And so thus far, we have received five hundred and thirty-six, or five hundred and thirty-six surveys have been returned to Portland Research Group, so.
And I would use this opportunity while we're on the air to urge anybody who hasn't returned the library survey to please do so. The more we have back, the better. The number of people who actually voted was, what, eighteen hundred or something, I think?
Close, I think it was close to two thousand, wasn't it?
Two thousand people who voted, so.
Oh, eighteen fifty-six, yeah.
Yeah, as I said, eighteen hundred stuck in my mind, so there's still lots of people out there. If you don't have a survey, we can get you one, you can do it online, it's, what is it, rockportlibrariesurvey.com?
Yep.
You can just go right online, I did it online, it was really easy, didn't take very long at all, even though I wrote a few special comments on there, it was, it was quick and easy, and that's, that's the way that saves the town the most money, too. So anybody out there who hasn't returned a survey yet, please take the time to do so, it'll really help us a lot. Anything else, Rick?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, any questions for the town manager on the updates?
Have we canned the door-to-door candidacy?
Yes, you, you did that the last, at the last.
I knew that it was like definitely a potential, I just didn't know if you woke up and had fifty volunteers that wanted to spend the next two weeks walking around.
Okay, so we will now move on to new business, and as change, we'll have Mr. Jackson come on up and ta- tell us about the Parks Committee and what's going on there.
Thank you very much for seeing me early, I was hoping I could continue watching Ken Burns Vietnam series. So thank you. And I have voted, or sent my in, my refer, my survey in, and so has my wife, so.
Thank you.
I actually asked for this meeting, this is not the regular annual report, and I thought it was time to talk about what's working and what's not working. And when I, when I learned a couple of hours ago that you were having a hearing about a dangerous building, I was, I hoped that you were talking about the old library, which the select board voted some time ago to remove, and I haven't seen any action on that at all yet.
Believe the select board ever voted to remove, we never voted to remove it, anyway.
Anyway.
It was discussed at one point, but it was never voted on.
Well, you should.
Okay.
Uh, if it isn't a dangerous building yet, it sure will be soon. So, I also might say that, um, Doug Cole came to our meeting, uh, at the last meeting we had last Wednesday, and, uh, and informed us of your initiative. We welcome that. I think from the beginning, um, the Parks Department has looked beyond, um, its, um, official charge into, uh, things that have to do with the general, um, outdoor appearance of Rockport. And cases in point are the, um, Traffic Island on Pascal Avenue, corner of Pascal Avenue and, and Commercial Street, um, the Arboretum, the Globe Arboretum hedge next to the Opera House. So we've always taken an interest a little bit beyond just specifically the parks. So we welcome that initiative. We want to cooperate, and, um, and so we're just waiting for, uh, further, um, instructions. There have been a few frustrations for us. We're now on our third Select Board liaison. We had always assumed, rightly or wrongly, that when we decided something, or we pointed out something that needed to be done in the parks, that it was sufficient to inform the, our liaison, that that would then become an issue that's brought to the Select Board, or the Town Manager, or the Public Works, uh, Manager as, as appropriate. And that seems, nothing, nothing ever seems to happen. So we, we make all these decisions, we, uh, we make these lists of things that need to be done, and then they seem to fall into a deep black hole. So we do need to know, how is that sort of thing gonna be done? There are some, for instance, some long lingering, um, projects that need to be done. In Mary Leah Park, the pathways are, uh, just awful. There's, uh, some very small gravel, um, on the top of a, um, of a plastic mat that's supposed to keep down weeds. The mat is poking out all over everywhere, and the gravel is, is, is peystone or gravel, whatever you wanna call it. A very small, um, stone is just scattered, and, you know, that's, that's not a job we can do as volunteers. That needs to be done by Public Works. So somebody needs to initiate that. We've talked about moving the, the bench, and.
What, the penalty bench?
The bench, then the, then that.
Penalty box?
That penalty box. We never get any response to that, and we just assume get rid of that whole penalty box. We also think, and this may be longer term, but the, that fence, fence is not appropriate for that park. We're not even sure you need a fence, uh, and so something needs to be done for that. But, you know, we have these discussions, uh, month after month after month, and nothing ever happens. So I'd just like to see something happening. We also have talked about, you know, this is like an annual task. The winter sand gets thrown up on Goodrich Park and covers the stairs. Uh, we removed it as volunteers one, one year, but then we had it in a pile. We had it, you were there, Owen, you did help us do it. And Public Works had to come along and, and take it away. I mean, it's just not the sort of thing I think we should be spending our time doing. It'd be a very easy job for Public Works to do. We mentioned it over and over again, and nothing ever happens. So I sound frustrated. I don't mean to be overly so, but I do want to convey to you that, uh, we feel sometimes like, uh, we're preaching to the choir and not really getting any satisfaction out of what we're, our work, what we're doing. So, thank you.
To, to eliminate my liaison report, and with regards to this, I was with Dave and, and the group, and, and Doug that particular day. And we did mention that there ought to be more of a focused effort on reporting to, to Rick, and then he can delegate out to the proper people. So that way, the, the highway foreman doesn't go around with his head in his hand. And I, I would agree that even when contracts are issued, because some of the stuff apparently isn't getting done by virtue of the, the groundskeeping, so perhaps more of an effort with the people that get the contracts, they'd be walked around and, and explained exactly what needs to be done.
Yeah, I would add comment on that. Thank you, Mark. You know, as Director of Camden Harbor Park and Amphitheater, I can tell you with, you know, direct experience that when you have a contractor working in, on the properties, somebody needs to check in on them. You don't have to stand there and look over their shoulder, but you need to stand, go in and see how they're progressing, see if they understand the job properly, and if they're having any problems. A case in point is, uh, the con, the landscape contractor who does work in Mary Leah Park, uh, very responsible. I think it's Claybrook.
Yeah, Claybrook.
I happened to come by there one day, and there were two women in there with their, um, powered, uh, pruning shears, doing a great job, but overlooking some things that we really wanted to be, to be done. So I, I stopped and said, and we read it, and I introduced myself, and I said, you know, I'd like to have you do this or that and the other thing, and they readily agreed, and we get it done. So, you know, somehow, and I'm happy, uh, as Chairman of the Parks Committee, to volunteer myself or a member of our committee to be on hand for when some of these jobs are getting done. Take ten or fifteen minutes. I have no problem doing that myself. And I just think that you're gonna get more money for your, you're gonna get more value for your money, and, um, and we're gonna get the job done properly. So I will say that, um, Mike Young has been great about, if he's doing a job, like removing trees in Harbor Park, he's come to me and before he started and showed me exactly what he was gonna do, and he's, uh, called me when he's, the job is in pros, pro, uh, progress. And I've very gladly gone to see what he was doing, and we, you know, chatted about it and so forth. So those can, those things can happen. The manpower is available. We're willing. We just need to have some coordination. Thank you.
Good. Quick comment? Dave, I feel your pain, absolutely. And what Dave referred to earlier was, uh, I did go to the Parks Committee meeting and started to brief them on, um, the Select Board goal of sort of beautifying the town. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, this is sort of a project that I've adopted. And we've been having some steering committee meetings, uh, to put together a plan, and our goal is to bring it to the next Select Board meeting. In fact, I need to talk with Ken about putting it on the agenda. But more importantly, is, the steering committee has worked through this, Dave. You know, our first inclination is to identify individual projects. Oh, oh, you know, clean up this park, or make this side nicer. But what has become very obvious is that indeed, the chain of command is not very well defined. And I, so I've started to talk with Rick about this a little bit, and, you know, what we need to do with the Department of Public Works to get things organized so that suggestions and complaints flow much more smoothly through the process. I, I know exactly what you're talking about, and, um, you know, before we can get down to the details of moving this bush or, or that, we need to really understand how this information flows through the, the town governance. So I'm on board with you, and I think we, I think we can make some real improvements going forward.
Hooray.
And I think typically the, uh, this, a lot of this will come out during a liaison report and a Select Board meeting, and then Rick would note, note something if there was something that had to be done, and so that's, that's the way things can flow. And I think we just have to be a little more, um, precise in our liaison reports, and, uh, and we can get things done.
Well, I think it's more than that.
Okay. Owen?
So, um, I was liaison with Parks a while back.
Right.
And the, well, first thing I'll say is, I tried to be the best liaison I could at that period of time because when I was on the Pathways Committee, I had a phenomenal Select Board liaison who kind of showed me all of the things a Select Board liaison should be doing to a committee, which is going to their committee meetings, engaging in that discussion and dialogue, trying to be a bit of a sounding board for what is realistic and what is not. And then one of the rules that, that I felt was mine anyway, was not contacting the Public Works Director, but when you all raised something, I would contact Rick, and, you know, if it was something that was on a timely manner, and I'm kind of being a little long-winded primarily for the new, the new Select Board members, if it was a time-sensitive thing, I wouldn't wait until the next meeting and do my liaison report. I would reach out to Rick and figure out if this is something that needs board approval, or he just wanted to give you the update, and then he gets Public Works engaged with it, so. So, yeah, um, that was more for the other, the other board members. One of the things, uh, kind of based off of what, uh, Pathways did, and it was more for like comprehensive planning and things like that, but they went through and formalized as part of a committee, a priorities list. They, they threw out all the different projects they wanted, and then ranked them. Each person got a certain amount of votes. And I guess, I haven't seen that list because that would help us, again, grasp the park situation. What are the things that you all are looking for? What, what can we try to figure out as far as financing those? Is it attainable? Is there a good blend that we can have to try to get some of those things done? So if you have a list, I would encourage you to try to get it.
We, uh, it's always, the, the last laundry list that we made up, and I can't remember when this was exactly, but it was the minutes of the meeting. And it's, those minutes are circulated to, uh, the Town Manager, to the Public Works Department Manager, and to our liaison.
It was the May of 2017 meeting. I remember seeing it, and.
Oh, okay, good.
It was, it was actually one of the.
So it was pretty recent?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But it, it, it sort of, and this is a whole nother topic, but it again spurred my request for a better distribution of media, uh, minutes to the Select Board, because if I hadn't gone looking for those, I never would have seen them, so, but that's a whole nother story.
We, we promise some improvements in the future.
Well, but I also want to say, Dave.
I'm not here to complain or, or to criticize any of our liaisons, but I'm just, I'm just here to point out that there's some, there's some, where things are falling through the cracks, not for any bad intentions, but just because we don't have systems.
Absolutely.
You're addressing this.
You're right. The system's wrong.
One of the things we are gonna be working on is, uh, one of the other Select Board goals is to, a guide for committee service, which will include how timely the minutes need to be, when they have to be presented, and, and things like that.
And I also want to point out, Dave, and I think you understand this. I, I think your suggestions are all good and everything, but just because the Parks Committee says something should be done, it doesn't mean we can necessarily do it, you know, there's financial constraints.
Oh, understood, absolutely.
Okay.
But what we'd like to have is some responses that, you know, you guys, this, this is just not affordable. Let's put it on a future agenda, et cetera.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for all you do there.
Absolutely.
A pleasure.
I have one last question, and it's, it's kind of a bigger question. It's a little off-topic, but it, it does relate to this. And that is, if we were to transition Public Works to having a work order system, would that help track, you said, you know, people were pruning and doing things at?
Sorry, I was trying to get you in, but.
Sorry. Uh, like they were, they were doing work at Mary Leah Park, and had you known that they were gonna be there, maybe you would have come to do an interface with them.
Absolutely.
I don't know a huge amount about work orders and how difficult or easy that would be, but do you think having a work order system with an online kind of viewing portal, you would be able to track?
That's a formality, and I don't know whether there's, we have the, um, infrastructure to do that. But for instance, when I hire Farley and Son to do a job at Harbor Park and Amphitheater, I, it's on a work order. So I know exactly what they're gonna do, and pretty much know when they're gonna do it. So I can comment on that to begin with, and then I can go and check on their work and say, well, you know, I, what we really wanted to have happen is this, and, uh, so there's some departure from that, and we'd like to see something changed.
But one of the many systems improvements that could be made.
Yep. And I'm happy to, you know, if I can contribute to that process, ask me. I'd be glad to do it. Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Very welcome. Thank you for allowing me to. See you later.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, um, we now have a lot of committee applications. Unfortunately, Anastasia had to leave. I got the note that she couldn't stay past eight. I thought I'd get a couple of minutes at four-eight, but we didn't quite make it. And we have some of the people here for these committees, and we have some that are not here, and I'm gonna have to, to see what the board wants to do about that. We do have all the applications on board for the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Let me first, the last one on the list was Anastasia Fisher for Board of Assessment Review. Do we want to act on that, or would we rather wait till next time and have her be here?
I kind of would, and she did sit through, she presented herself, just not.
She did provide us with a.
Do you want to ask her back, or just act on it?
He said he wants to act on it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Are you kidding? Yeah. Someone sits here and.
Right. She provided a fairly.
Honest.
Good, uh, application, I thought. She got a, a very nice endorsement from the, uh, from Tony Bates, the committee chair, indicating that she had spent quite a bit of time with him. I ran into Tony in the grocery store the other day, and he said, I hope you act on it. I know you're gonna act on this one, and so I feel fairly confident, uh, having met Anastasia prior to the last election, that, that, uh, this is something that she would be good at. It's not a committee that meets very often, but it is a committee that when it's needed, it has to be up to speed and ready to go.
Does she have one for both?
Yes, she does.
Okay.
I make a motion. We accept her application.
We have a, uh, trying to find a date on that one. I don't see it.
It's one of those things.
I don't see a suggested motion on the, usually we have a suggestion on the date, the motion.
And usually we don't have any applications.
I don't see it. Do we have the list of the, of the, uh, committee someplace? Who's on the committee now? Uh, yeah, because we would then be able to figure out what the expiration terms were. Let me see if I can find that.
We could give her a three-year term.
We want to make sure that we've got the right balance of. Yes?
Looking up on the town website.
Okay, you're one step ahead of me.
You can see that expires June 30, 2020.
Okay, then that sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion then?
Yep.
Okay, so the motion is for, uh, Anastasia Fisher to the Board of Assessment Review with a term expiration of June 30th, 2020, as I heard it, right from Doug's.
Right here.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Don't go anywhere, Bill.
All in favor? Okay, that passes, and we have Anastasia on the Board of Assessment Review. Now we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine applications for the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, and I don't know whether the rest of you got the one from Mike Robertson or not. There was an email from that that came in late.
Yeah.
Mike Robertson?
Yeah, he, uh, in fact, Mike, I believe is.
Still with us.
He's here.
Oh.
So.
Do you want to clean up on, on her before we?
Well, let me ask the board in general. How does the board feel about dealing with these applications for the, for the applicants who are not here? I mean, a lot of them we know.
I've been a stickler before about having him come. I know she was here, had to leave. I'm flexible.
I'm very flexible. Again, I think if people are willing to go to the trouble to fill out an application for a town committee, and particularly if some of us on the board can vouch for these people, then.
Okay. Well, the ones that are here, we'll have, come on up, so, um, Mike, you want to come on up? Just, uh, tell us a little bit about it, and then we'll have Bill, and then, uh, and Linda is here, so. You will then first, if you want to just introduce yourself to the rest of the board and.
I'm Mike Robertson.
Wicked nice penmanship.
How do you like that, huh? Jamie contacted me and said that there was probably a need, and this was a slot that he felt that I would be helpful. That's about what I know about it. I think I sort of got volunteered for this.
So do you see yourself as a shill for Jamie?
I, I certainly do not, no.
That is a joke.
Do you have any questions that I can answer, or anything that seems unclear?
Mike joined the ORC last year and, and had a lot of really good input about some kind of sticky issues that we worked our way through. His application indicated that, um, and I think that he would be a good voice, uh, business owner in town.
What's your business? What's your business?
I own Rhino Services, we're a construction company.
Yep, okay.
Meadow Street.
And I've been in Rockport, resident all my life except for college.
Great.
Almost all your life.
Well, still counseling.
Not technically a mainer unless you're born here and your grandparents are born here as well, I think.
Well, I learned that early on.
Cat can have kittens in the oven, but it don't make them biscuits.
That's right.
Been to the Jones Boys too, I see.
Oh, all right, all right, so.
Um, and these terms, this is an ad hoc committee, and the anticipation is that this will go a year. And Jamie's, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, plan as it were, were to have the review committee work for a year. And then in the second year, there would be a plan to draft amendments, changes, updates, whatever you want for the comprehensive plan. And it isn't necessarily, I mean, there may be some who serve on this first committee who will say their work done after a year. There may be some who want to stay for the second year, there may be some new people who come in for the second year. So there's no term expiration on these, so.
I would move that we accept Ian, uh, Mike Robinson's Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, uh, application for a term expiring June 30th, 2018.
No term expiration.
Well, I think this is a year.
No, it's, it's an ad hoc committee, so he may end up staying another year if he decides to stay on for the second year.
I second that.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes, all in favor.
Thank you.
Already moving on.
Okay, thank you very much for volunteering, appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Bill's in the front row, we'll have Bill come up next.
Uh, we want to keep Linda here.
That's the only way you're going to keep pressing.
That's right.
Who are you, anyway?
Bill Chapman, I'm a resident of Rockport, formerly served on the select board a bit. And, you know, had some dealings with reviewing the comprehensive plan while I was on the select board, trying to encourage some review of it, and we did get a couple of spreadsheets from Tom Ford that pointed out areas that could be improved, and I know there are a couple of areas that could probably be removed, but.
I make a motion that the town accept Bill's application for membership on the ad hoc committee of to review the comprehensive plan committee.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor? Welcome aboard. Thank you very much for volunteering.
I have a quick question, when did we close the, we said it, it was like the end of this month, right? For closing, because I'm just trying to remember how many people we said we were going to put on this committee.
We closed them at tonight's meeting.
And I was trying to remember, because I'm just trying to figure out if these are the only people we have to work with, or?
I would say that there's still one person that's away right now, I think that intends on having, um, Charlton. I did speak with him.
Ames?
Yeah.
And how many people did we say we were going to put on this?
I think we said up to nine.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
Now you've got ten, is it?
Yeah, that, you know, I mean, he's had a month, uh, two weeks to act.
One of the early architects, so I was just trying to.
Was he part of the 2004?
He basically wrote the 2004.
Yeah, Linda and Richard.
Yeah.
Geez, it kind of wouldn't be a bad idea to keep.
Well, but we've got Richard and we've got Linda too, I mean, I don't have anything against Charlton, but, you know.
And I think, I think if he's willing to work with the committee, he could still make his expertise known, even if he wasn't a committee member, I think that that would be fine.
Yep.
Uh, but I think we need, we owe it to the people who applied to consider their applications tonight, so.
Linda?
Linda, you're up.
Linda, your penmanship is not better than Mike Roberts', because I mean, his is amazing.
It's fine.
Yours is like, you're a doctor.
Really?
No, not quite. You don't have your laptop with you, it's a problem.
So anything you want to say to us? Linda Clancy, Rockport resident. Yeah, fourteen, fifteen years goes by in a flash, because here we are looking at it and, um, ready to review it. And I, I think that's really interesting, I think it's time, I'm, I've, I don't know, I've referred to it, I've referenced it in articles over the years, um, talked about it. And, uh, it's come up in various other committees, um, but I've never really stood back and actually looked at it to see what we've done in town. I mean, we established a lot of zoning, I guess, um, took place, and we created Legacy Rockport. And beyond that, I'm not really sure what we have done.
You're about to find out.
I think so.
Thank you.
I do know that, though, the community is, um, feels like the commu- community is strong to begin with, but it feels a little bit stronger. So I think Rockport's got some really good things going for it right now, yeah.
I'll make the motion, substitute Linda's name.
Have a second?
Sec, what was the motion?
Put Linda's name into appoint her to the ad hoc committee, blah, blah, blah.
Get all those blah, blah, blahs there, Linda?
Kind of have to get the blah, blah, blahs out of the way, it's just like a pesky. Learned under this guy.
Yeah.
I do have a question.
The motion is to appoint Linda to the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, and it has been seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
Let me think about it.
Is it, is it a one-year term, is that?
Uh, it's a, it's an ad hoc committee, so the committee itself will likely cease to exist at, uh.
June of 19.
It'll, it'll morph in the second year, it'll morph into an ad hoc comprehensive plan update committee. And like I said, some members of the committee may decide to stay on for the second year, some may say, my work is done, and we may get new people in at that point, so.
So there's a really specific goal for this ad hoc committee, it's not going to be loosey-goosey and we'll.
Exactly, Jamie has a plan all worked out, and one of the first things Jamie will do is get that plan to you folks.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? No, okay, thank you for serving. Now, I, before Linda leaves, and I don't know whether she's going to leave or not, I, I want to echo a couple of things what Linda said, is that the, the way the comprehensive plan was done the first time was very good. And I think Bill put in his application, there may not be a lot of changes necessarily needed, but it, it does require a fresh look. And I can say from, you know, the Pathways Committee helped, when I was on that committee, the liaison to that committee helped to rewrite Camden's comprehensive plan, and they used Rockport's as a guide as to how to do it well. So I think we're in good shape, and I think it's great that we're starting off. As for the rest of the, uh, the members who are not here, um, as long as the board is willing, I'd be willing to, to have a mass motion to approve these folks unless there's any objection to that.
Does that put us over nine, and do we just have like an alternate?
It'll put us at nine.
Put us at nine.
At ten, I think, Rick.
No, at ten.
Ten, yeah. Uh, really? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I'm counting.
Oh, oh, no, I counted Anastasia twice.
Yeah, there's, it's nine.
Okay, I counted Anastasia twice.
We'll put us at nine.
I can speak personally to one, two, three, well, really four people on this list. Some that I knew were going to apply and some that weren't, and to be honest, I don't see any loose cannons. Um, I think it's refreshing to see some new names on here, with all due respect to Bill and Linda, of course.
Well, I think the mix is going to be terrific.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the thing, so again, I can address a few of those people, others I don't know as well, but.
Yeah, I know Jan well, I know Richard well.
I know Jeff Kubel through my wife's family, and I've only heard good things about the Kubels.
Yeah, he's a solid citizen.
And you probably know him through the hospital, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I know Bob Baldwin, I don't know, I don't know his wife as well, but I know Bob, um, obviously Anastasia, um, so.
I think Bob and Janice's expertise is just, you know, fairly long-term residents of Rockport who have a civic interest, so. That's good too.
All right, let's see if we can do this.
Yes.
This might sound wrong coming from me, but I look at that list and there are six names on there that all live in the village. I just wanted, you know, make sure you were aware that the Baldwins, myself, Jan Rosenbaum, Linda's just out of the village, Anastasia.
Linda doesn't live in the village.
Midtown.
Uptown.
Yeah, uptown. Yo, I, I don't know if that bears on anything.
Well, it, it does, and it's something I thought about when I approached Richard. I, I did go out to Richard's shop and I talked with him, and sort of made it clear to him that, you know, he was a West Rockport resident, and, and that's what my interest in having him on the committee was. And he graciously understood that, and of course, that was happy. So from, on a personal standpoint, yes, I'm aware of that. Could we have done a little more? Perhaps.
What's your first action date? What is the first time you wish to have these people sitting down and reviewing information?
Wasn't it October?
October 1st.
It's monthly from now on.
Yeah.
I mean, because I, I would love to be able to hold it for another month and see if we can't get some other more diverse people, but, uh, they're all great folks, and if we can get started on it, get started on it.
And they're public meetings, I mean, the West Rockport residents, if they feel strongly, can certainly come to the meetings. Richard is not a shy wallflower at all, he will represent the interests of that part of town well, and.
Don't misunderstand me, I'm not saying none of them.
No, it's a good, it's a good point, it's a good point, yeah.
I, I know many of them.
And the work that they'll be doing is really just reviewing what's existing, what?
Yeah.
It's looking at what's existing, have we achieved, you know, what have we achieved, what have we missed? What's the low-hanging fruit that we could potentially, should be focusing on?
And it may be for the second year of this process that we can do a better job at perhaps, you know, reaching out to other parts of town.
If I might, I move we appoint Richard Remson, Anastasia Fisher, Jan Robinson, Rosenbaum, Jeffrey Cumbel, Kubel, sorry, Robert and Janice Baldwin, uh, to the ad hoc comprehensive plan review.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? And none opposed, that's a unanimous vote, okay. Thank you all for volunteering, appreciate it very much, I think we have a group that'll work well on the.
Those present, your reward is to compare calendars and schedule someone that works for you guys.
Doodle pole, doodle pole.
I hate those doodle poles.
Okay.
Can I tell you how many of them I have to answer?
Next, we have Megan, who has sat here very patiently.
Do we have one more, uh, from Anastasia Fisher?
We already, we did one first, yeah.
Silly, silly me.
So we have a report from the finance director regarding the close of the previous fiscal year, the cash flow analysis, and encumbrances, uh, and the encumbrances we'll have to act on. And I'll let Megan sort of take over and run all those three items together if you so desire.
Megan, are you going to be offended if I use the bathroom real quick?
No, I can wait.
Shoot, you want to do it just as super quick, is that, are you trying to get out of your quick, can we take five?
Doesn't matter.
I don't want to.
Well, if you want to go ahead, take a quick break, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just going to use the bathroom.
We'll, uh, so we'll, we'll take a, uh, two or three-minute break.
Why don't you come over to the counter? That's okay.
We're coaching cross country.
Okay.
We end at five.
Okay. Hey, we're on.
But after that, no.
Okay. Okay, wait, when, as soon as, okay, we're back on. Thank you for indulging us on our short break, Megan, the floor is yours.
Sure. So we'll start with the year on report for fiscal years sixteen seventeen, which ended June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. We ended the year in a very good position. Our expenditures were under expended at two hundred and nineteen thousand. We collected a hundred and thirty eight thousand more in revenues than were projected. Which leaves us a net difference of three hundred and fifty eight thousand in the positive, which is a really good position for us to be in. We'll talk a little bit more when we get to the encumbrance piece of that, it will take us a little bit of that away. It will reduce that, but I would expect that the majority of that will be deposited into our UFB. The supporting documentation here outlines any outliers for individual departments. If they had under expenditures, what caused those under expenditures, if they, if they had overages, what were those overages, same with revenues. Do you have any questions within individual, Owen?
I have a question on the, so you said we collected a hundred and thirty eight thousand six hundred and ninety nine more in revenues than anticipated. Is that the money from, that we got in additional valuation for CMP plus some other things? Or are we gonna realize that in the next budget cycle? I'm just wondering if this hundred and thirty eight was because.
No, it wouldn't be because that valuation wasn't done until after this fiscal year.
Right, so, so we had that much additional revenue prior to getting the additional revenue from CMP.
Well, I think.
That revenue from CMP is actually in the tax assessment.
Right.
So that CMP went towards how much, it went towards reducing our mill rate. So the, the tax burden was spread out over a larger portion of the tax base with that CMP increase.
Cool.
Eighty one thousand, I think Linda had put in there as revenues from new vehicle excise tax, I think which accounts for a lot of that hundred and thirty eight. Right. Yeah, it's over half of it.
Yep.
Anything stand out to you?
No, I think we ended the year, excise tax played a big part in it. Our interest in our checking and savings accounts played a huge part in it. With the new agreement that we had with the first, we had a much higher interest rate. Which almost doubled what we collected in previous years in interest. So that helped us a lot as well in terms of projections.
As you, I'm sorry, as you remember, when we go through budgets, you know, there's the, when we get to the end of the budget, we have the, the, the. Discussion is over revenue and how much to predict and, and we have a tendency, I think is a good choice, is to be a little conservative on our revenue. So in case it doesn't come in, we're not in a bind. So it's always nice to see the revenues come in better than we expected. But we, you know, when we're trying to make the budgets match and predict out what, what the mill rate's gonna be. It's always a challenge to not wanna overpredict revenue and.
We also received two fairly significant payments from our insurance carrier. One was for almost, just over sixty four hundred, which was an insurance dividend on our liability insurance side. And the other was almost for fifteen thousand dollars on our workers' comp for reducing our claims. So the work that we're doing in terms of safety awareness and getting the fire departments shape certified. And all that work that we're doing is really paying off, especially when it's coming to our workers' comp rates.
Yeah, that's key.
What, what do you, what do you anticipate might be a number that gets deposited back into the undesignated fund balance? What, what is that percentage we currently have and what does your projection bring that up to perhaps?
Our current percentage is just over fifteen. I, my current estimates, and mind you, all these figures are unaudited. My current estimate is that we will be depositing about two hundred and fifty thousand into the unassigned fund balance this year.
That brings us up another percentage point?
Roughly.
Sixteen.
Our budget went up too, so that plays an effect into how much of this.
And that, that number depends on what you decide, you know, if you move all the encumbrances forward.
And we also took a significant amount out of the UFB this year to offset the budget. Hundred and twenty thousand, I believe, too, so that will reduce it and then we're putting two hundred and something into it. So you're not really putting two hundred and something into it because you took a hundred and twenty out.
But that's what it's for, it's, it's, if we have excess money in there, it's, we can use it to reduce the tax burden on, on the public. And then, one of the things that I'm looking forward to is that, I think this year in the budget process was this, for the first time, the auditor said that. We had to budget for health insurance for everybody, even if they didn't take it.
Right.
And so we had to put those numbers in the budget, which inflated that part of the budget significantly. And this is the first year we did it. Now what'll happen, correct me if I'm wrong, what'll happen at the end of the budget year is if there are a few employees who don't take the health insurance. And so that money will be budgeted, it will not have been spent, and so that will be a source for some return to the UFB also.
That's my hope, but we've already seen some personnel changes within the town office, which, which is gonna affect those rates.
Right.
So it, it was a good choice for us to, to benefit for those unfunded liabilities. And you'll see in the explanations for departments, a lot of departments went over in health insurance costs. Because, one, we didn't fund those unfunded liabilities. And two, our insurance rates went up more than we predicted, almost doubled what we predicted.
Where I was going with my percentage question was, I mean, I'm, I'm big on trying to get the capital improvement projects cleaned up. And, and part of where I would go in the future is to suggest that we use some of this money that might be above the comfort zone. From Megan in the town to, to do some of those projects.
To follow up on that, and that was sort of my question, because Ken said that if we have these extra funds, it can be used to reduce the mill rate. And I understand that, I mean, I, you know, I can understand that viewpoint. But it doesn't have to be used to reduce the mill rate, it could be used to work on infrastructure.
It could.
Okay, alright.
And in fact, in the past, we've done that, we've taken some money out of UFB.
In one respect, it would help the mill rate because you'd be using that money versus raising it next to the year after.
The only issue we have to be careful of, and Megan will hit us hard on this, is, is we don't wanna get it to the point where we have to take out a tax anticipation note.
And we can talk about that some when we get to the cash flow.
Right, yeah, if that's coming up. Final question, any, any, anything that sticks out for you as far as like, we can do something really different in the budget for the next year?
I would, we have a very new board this year, I have some ideas of things that I would like to see from the board to include in the budget. I have reviewed a lot of budgets. Some have the select board goals listed in the budget, I think that that would be a good idea to actually have the goals outlined from the select board. They have letters from the select board explaining the decisions that they made, the cuts that they made, increases that they made. I think that that would be a good addition to make. And I think it would be a good idea for us to have a discussion on things that you'd like to see changed, things you'd like to see added. I'm hoping that fairly soon we'll get our letter or something back from the Government Finance Offers Association. About what they thought of our budget, whether they think that there's things that we need to change or they're good with the way it is. I don't know what kind of timeframe they follow with that submission, but it was submitted a month or more ago. So I'm hoping that we'll get that back fairly soon.
Couple of questions. So I don't know if these two are connected, but my first two questions are, one, are some of these ideas, things that you've come up with. Working with our new auditors that have been there helping you, or is this just kind of, like, is this based on the recommendations from our new firm? Or just things that you've observed that?
These are things that I have observed going through other nationally recognized budgets. I haven't worked with our new auditors all that much, they have spent a week in my office. Making some adjustments to our accounting software. Other than that, we haven't really gotten into the nitty gritty of, of what they think would be a good direction for us to go. One of the first things I'd really like to work with them on is our UFB and what they think is a good targetable number for us. That's one of the top things on my list to discuss with them once we are through the audit and, and through.
Two things is, one is that in the process of going through to get our budget certified by the.
GFOA?
GFOA. Is, you have to go through and do a lot of work and explain a lot of things. And, and so it helps us understand if we're lacking in places, in ways, places we can improve, we see that. And the next thing is, Megan, just last week, attended a three day GFOA conference in Kennybunk Port.
Yes.
Kennybunk Port, which is also very helpful because it, there were people there from all over New England, correct? So we're not even just limited to our area, you're, you know, she's having some interaction with people from all around New England. And they, they're talking about budgets and better ways to do budgeting. So it allows us the means to, and the ability to learn things and maybe make our budget even better than it is today. And that's our, our goal.
I had another question unless you wanted to build on that.
No, of course.
So you've got this SHAPE acronym in here twice.
Yes.
Maybe I overlooked it, but what is it and why is it awesome? And is there anything that we can do to encourage, to make you more SHAPE compliant and get more money back from whoever likes to give us money?
We are striving to get the town completely SHAPE compliant. Do you know what that?
Safety, safety, something.
It's an acronym.
It's an acronym, yeah.
It says three hundred days without an incident.
It's in Jason's office, if you wanna, I, I don't know what it actually stands for. But it basically says that your department strives for employee safety. And that you are doing the best that you can to ensure that you have policies in place. To ensure that your work environment is as safe as it possibly can be.
But the, the challenge we have now with future SHAPE compliance, as I remember, was that, that the other departments that are left. The other big ticket departments that are left, they don't have a, a clear accident history for a period of time. There's a, there's a period of so many years that you have to have a good history.
So the next department we tried to get SHAPE certified was the police department. And what they do is they take your OSHA three oh one A logs, which is what you report your incidents on. And they compare your averages over the last five years to the state averages for like departments. And if you fall out of that average, then they won't even consider you for SHAPE compliance. And we fell without, within, out of that average. So we have to wait until we can fall back within that average. But just because we can't apply for that, doesn't mean that we are gonna stop working towards that. We're still gonna work with Safety Works and make sure that all of our policies are in place. And we're gonna still work and make sure that our employees are all trained. And then once we get that rating down low enough that we can apply for the SHAPE compliance, then we're gonna be right on that. And MMA will see that, and they'll see that we're SHAPE compliant and they're working towards that, and they're gonna reduce our workers' comp rates.
Thank you, I mean, for that, and then I forget the other acronym for your, your financial excellence, but.
GFOA.
This totally non glamorous stuff that you all do behind the scenes, that all of a sudden you can come and say, oh, here's twelve thousand extra dollars for this and that. Thank you very much. Another question that I had, if it's all right, so I was a little, when I saw the Public Works, how much money was left over? It, it was a decent amount, but then you look over and realize that they have expended ninety, almost ninety two percent of their money. So we feel like they're, even though it's a large item, it's good proportionally.
We'll take care of that in the encumbrances.
Yeah, some of that will come up in the encumbrances, yeah.
And, and I guess I kinda read it, public assistance at sixty percent, but we're anticipating a tick up?
Public assistance is a really hard thing to budget for because there's a lot of factors that go into. How many people walk through our doors for public assistance? The year before last was a really hard winter and a lot of people were seeking shelter. So we far exceeded our budget. So then the following year, we increased it in reference to what had happened the previous year. And this year, we didn't have that harsh winter like we had the year before, and we didn't have that uptick in people coming in for shelter. It also matters how many places in the area are taking people on a week basis. And we had one hotel that wasn't taking people on a week set schedule, so that reduces how many people we can assist.
Building on that, and just a random thought, to ease, because one of the things that I like that we at least do is we try not to have big swings, as, as understandable as they are. Do we have the ability to do a reserve account for public assistance so we can keep the budget number consistent? And yet know that we, if we exceed, because it was a heavy and harsh winter, we've got fifteen, twenty thousand set aside.
So what happens with public assistance is that it's reimbursed by the state. So if we don't expend it, we're not getting, is it fifty or seventy five percent?
I don't know, it's, yeah.
It was fifty.
I think they increased it. I think it's seventy two. So if we don't expend it, then we're not getting the reimbursement, so our revenues were down too, so it kinda offsets itself.
Okay. And then the last question that I can remember is, culture and recreation, a year to, year to date, we haven't, we're at eighty six percent. Which is fine, but I guess because it's not like Public Works, and then you look in and see Public Works. What are the departments that are under culture and recreation? Harbor, parks.
Library.
Library.
And that's the, I think that's.
Opera House.
Opera House.
So it's a big conglomeration of a lot of our different.
Yep.
And is there like a big, is it, was there a?
So it's library, if you look at the next page, it's the library, conservation, parks and rec, opera house, and the library building.
Oh, gotcha. Was there a, I didn't actually get to this page, so maybe I will then reserve all my talking and look over and see if something pops out at me. I think that was all of my stuff. Oh, and I love seeing that the finance hit their, their mark a hundred percent, perfect.
Of course.
Perfect show offs. And collected more revenue.
Hey, what can I say?
Okay, so shall we move on to the cash flow management piece?
So I'll skip the memo part and go right to the, the numbers part. So the first page outlines our projected expenditures for the year. Things like the school payments, the adult ed, those are easy because those are set in stone every month. We pay the same amount every single month. Payroll fluctuates depending on whether it's a four week month, five week month, how many, how much overtime Public Works had. So payroll is estimated by historical information.
Further down, Terry. I think you, I think you gotta go quite a ways yet.
Yeah, you have to go, keep going.
There's the memo and then, there it is, right there.
Fringe benefits would include health insurance that the employer pays for. I think that's the only thing that's included in this fringe benefits line, because dental vision, stuff like that's paid all by the employee. Workers' comp insurance, yes, Owen.
I'm sorry, I am unfamiliar with this style of a spreadsheet. Like, can you give me?
Sure.
Each one of these is an individual monthly payment?
So across the top is the months.
Yeah.
So we have twelve months in the fiscal year, and then below that is however many weeks is in that month. And then down the left hand side is the expenditures that I didn't group all into like all other. So our big ticket expenditures are school expenses, payroll, fringe benefits, workers' comp. Property and casualty payments, which is our liability insurance, our midco solid waste assessments, the Northeast Mobile Health Contract. All of our debt payments, which are listed there.
This is making more sense, thank you.
Large purchases, so any budgeted large, large purchases that we had for seventeen eighteen. I broke out our utilities instead of lumping them all together. And included in those utilities are our mowing contracts and our winter sidewalk contracts. Paving and road construction, which I kept those in months that we typically spent them in prior years, as well as our county tax payments. So for most of those, because we had never done this in the past, I had to look at how much was spent last year. And kinda averaged those out based on however many weeks were in those months. And if I knew that electricity was projected to go up three and a half percent, then I added three and a half percent to those months and plugged those numbers in here. On the next page is our revenue collection estimates. So municipal revenue sharing, again, that's based on what we had received for sixteen seventeen. I either rounded up or rounded down based on what we had received those months. Excise tax collection, I had averaged out what we had received. Property tax collection was a really hard number to estimate. And if you look at. Page eight, so the last page of the packet. You will see how much of a percentage I estimated that we would collect each month. And how I figured this is how much we collected in sixteen seventeen each month with our prior tax commitment. And I use these numbers to base them on this year's tax commitment. Assuming that we would collect roughly the same percentages this year.
So you didn't project any growth in property taxes?
I did, because I used the new tax commitment.
Yeah.
She's last year's percentage.
I used last year's percentages with this year's tax commitment.
Alright, I turned the page, sorry.
Yeah.
The harbor collects a lot of revenue, so I broke the harbor revenue out separate.
Which page do you wanna know?
Page two.
Back to page two.
Page two, yep.
We are expecting a big reimbursement from the wastewater for the truck purchase for Public Works, so I put that in here as well. We receive monthly payments from wastewater for wages and benefits for three departments, so I put those revenues in here. And then the monthly reimbursement for the library, I took their total reimbursement and divided it by twelve. Their reimbursement is really hard to estimate because their expenses are all over the place and their reimbursement is based on what their expenses are. So this number will be off, but there was no better way to estimate that number. On the next page.
Just on that, it, it doesn't make any sense to try to get them on a schedule just because that would inhibit how the library functions.
Right, because it's based on their book purchases, their supply purchases, things like that.
Totally makes sense. But as we move forward, Megan will be gathering this data and entering what the actuals are. And over time, we'll have a better idea, she'll, she'll be able to build a, a better level of confidence in the projections. As we get more and more data entered in.
Right. So the next page puts it all together. So you'll see in that first box where it says beginning balance under July seventeen, that is what we started July first, two thousand and seventeen with in our account balances. Then we add our cash inflows, that was our projected revenues. Then we subtract our outflows, so those were our expenses for the month. I'm sorry, then it's our subtotals, and then we subtract our cash outflows with our ending balance. And then that ending balance continues throughout the year. You'll notice in August, we end the month with a one point four million dollar balance. In February and March, we have one point three and one million dollars. One million dollars barely covers our school payments. Our school payments are just over eight hundred thousand dollars. So with a UFB of just over fifteen percent, we can barely make a month's worth of school payments in March. And that's assuming we have a normal winter. If we have a rough winter and we spend more than anticipated in winter sand and winter salt, then that makes that number even worse.
Ask a question, so a lot of that is in reference?
So a lot of that is in referencing the TANs, right, the tax anticipated notes and that we don't want to get there? And though I have heard multiple times that it's just something we want to avoid, which seems to make sense. What kind of like interest rates are we talking about if we have to go? I mean, it's a, it's a really big financial deal for the town to do it and you kind of get caught in a cycle of having to continuously do it. And you're talking about what for, what for interest on these loans?
We haven't done one in so long.
Uh, I, I wouldn't even.
Well, it's not only that, but also the loss of interest of cash in the bank too.
Right.
So it's, it's.
And, and it doesn't look good for us. If we go to bond something, our interest rate on that bond is going to be higher because they're going to see that we have to do a tax anticipation note, so they're going to see that we don't manage our cash flow well.
How do we cushion this a little bit better?
We have to increase our UFB, it's the only way.
By charter, we're co- required to have twelve percent, but that, that was adopted
Long time ago.
Long time ago, when our expenditures were a lot less and, and, well, the, the amount that we have to keep in, in, um, in the bank has gone up and our need to pay, make payments has gone up, has increased and the, the percentage allotted has not.
I'd be curious to know when the last time we had to do a, um, a loan.
A ten?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I know it's been a while, but I'm curious, I mean, yes, I, I would agree that it should go up.
Well, that's the minimum that's required.
Right.
You know, we can't go below that. I think it's in our best interest to have some amount of money that allows us to keep paying our bills. But as, as Alex pointed out, you don't want to have too much in there, because if you have too much in there.
Yeah, it's a balancing, it's a balancing issue, but.
It's always been your and previous managers and, and previous finance directors wishes strongly to us not to spend money in certain months.
Right.
So I think if that is, is held true and, and encouraged, then hopefully we won't need to.
Cash, sorry, I mean, this cash flow takes that into consideration too. Because you're right, there are months that I asked department heads to only spend money on things that are necessary. And that's because money is so tight that we just can't, especially when we hit January and February, depending on what the winter has been like so far.
Well, we have to have enough money there, like you say, to pay the unanticipated bigger bill.
Right.
Maybe revenue, I mean, maybe you have a terrible winter month in February, that affects the plowing and stuff like that. But it also means that people aren't going to go out and buy new cars that month. And so the excise tax may take a hit too.
Right.
And I think, you know, keeping away from the TANs really speaks to the financial strength of the town. And as you say, it comes into play with, with, uh, bonding rates and things like that. It's going to save us a lot of money over, over long-term.
But at what point is enough too much?
Right, that's the question you have to, and that's what Megan is trying to tell us with this analysis, I think. And you, the analysis is terrific, it's really great to see these numbers.
And, and this was a, a large topic of discussion in our last budget cycle. So I would like, uh, and the point of this was for us to come to some sort of number that isn't egregious, but works so that we can pay our bills and that we're not faced with a point that we can't make those payments.
And I think the last auditor's report that we had from the prior audit, auditing firm also indicated that the the UFB should be a little bit higher too, I believe. I think they, they said that, you know, our, our requirement of twelve percent was a little outdated.
And when they said a little bit higher, do you mean at the current rate that we're at now, we should be a little bit higher or the?
We've had more than the twelve percent. I mean, our charter says we can, we have to have at least that and we've had more than that.
We're at fifteen right now.
Well, that's, that's where I'm going. Were they commenting on the twelve that we say we're supposed to have?
I think they were, yeah.
Okay, so fifteen's a good.
Be okay?
I think.
Well, you can see by, with fifteen, we're close, right, Megan?
Right, our, our hardest month is March.
That's when we're down to a mill.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, quick question, so on the, um, revenues, the first line is municipal revenue sharing. Putting my other hat on, that is receiving two percent? Is that the current numbers that revenue sharing, like it was previously at five percent of, of, of sales tax and, and things like that on the state end, now it's down to two percent? Okay.
And that's page five of eight?
That's page two of eight, that first line, municipal revenue sharing. And it's not a huge amount of money, but if you more than double that, it really doesn't change it here, like.
Rockport is fortunate in the fact that when revenue sharing was decreased, it didn't have a huge impact on the budget like it did in smaller municipalities such as Union, Warren, Waldboro, towns that
And there's a similarity with the fact that we don't get certain state subsidies for the CSD and the SAD.
Right.
Um, we don't get that much for revenue sharing, so when those things go away, we don't necessarily feel it.
Our bud, you know, our budget is not really balanced on getting a lot of revenue sharing money.
Right.
That's why I guess I was asking, because five, page five and page two were actual versus projections.
So we can continue, so page four. Instead of, uh, predicted expenditures, this is where the actual expenditures will go. And then the same for page five, actual revenues will be posted there in the same format that the predicted, projected revenues will go. And then page six will show the actual cash flow. And then page seven will compare the projected versus the actuals and then the difference. So you'll see in July, which is the only month that's been filled out so far. Um, we actually ended the month of July with a positive difference of three hundred and sixty-six thousand. Um, which is good, I'd rather our projections be a little low than high. Um, but these, I think these will even out because I averaged utilities out based on the month that they're used. So some of the utilities that had been used in July hadn't been paid yet until August. Uh, so the August utilities will show a little higher than they were in July. Um, so I think that will average out, uh, as the year goes on.
Megan, the differences page one to page four, you know, we've got the projected and then the actuals. Why are the actuals on some of these things, the PD equipment, eighteen thousand, five hundred? And then also the, the last line, the other, the difference on projected of eighty-five thousand versus actual of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two. Not that I'm saying that there's anything wrong there, but can you talk me through why there are some numbers projected, but we haven't hit them on actuals?
So for other, what I did is I took, when I got to the, when I had all the other numbers put in, I left the other line blank. I took the total for the expenditures that was at the bottom and I looked at what our net expenditures for the year were going to be and I figured out what the difference was. And I took that difference and I divided it by twelve. Instead of going through every individual expense line in the budget and figuring out where it went. Once this has gone through a cycle, it will be easier for me to determine where those numbers actually go. So that's the difference with the eighty-five thousand. Um, the PD equipment, uh, Randy has not made that purchase yet. I thought he was going to make it right at the first of the year, but he's decided to wait to make that purchase until he purchases the, the new cruiser. So that's the difference there. Um, with the other stuff.
Are you a month behind on some of these? Like the hydrant, you'll be able to plug that number in because you'll actually get it in August.
Right, it was used in July but paid in August because of how they do their billing.
Okay, cool, thank you very much.
No problem.
This is excellent stuff. I mean, it's when I started as a selectman, it, you know, it sort of puzzled me that we didn't have this. I mean, I think any homeowner has a concept of, you know, what they paid last winter for fuel and things like that. So this is great, Megan, I think you've done a yeoman's job.
Well, we, you know, we've, we've had, we've had this in, in our heads. But it puts it in, on, in printed forms, you can actually see it. Instead of Megan just running around saying the sky is falling, the sky is falling.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, it's a new select board.
Well, you're starting to build a record too.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Starting to build a, a tool that's just going to become more valuable with time.
With more data, it will get, it will get better and better.
And it'll be much easier to, to circle something and say, ooh, this is way out of line. You know, and we gotta, you know, we got, we had this fifty thousand dollar expense in this month that we didn't anticipate. That means we're going to tighten the belt for the rest of the fiscal, whatever it might be, but.
And it will be easier for me to determine outliers sooner instead of, because currently, I mean, I look at expense and revenue reports on a monthly basis. But I only do the quarterly reports for you on a quarterly basis and that is normally when I see the huge outliers is when I'm doing those reports. But doing this monthly is going to allow me to see those outliers on a quicker basis and I'll be able to address them much sooner.
Maybe it'll make our meeting shorter.
Oh, and, yeah, you still got this guy, your meetings are never going to be short. Um, you referenced someplace else in one of the other documents that you had that you're, and I think it was based on the recommendation from the auditors. You're, you're changing reporting deadlines for the departments to like a, a previous month or am I laying this out in a way that makes sense to you? Um, like, no, no, and I, and I, um, we were late in getting our last audit done for a multiple, multitude of reasons, but one of which was that department heads weren't getting, some weren't getting the budgets in at a specific time. And I felt like I read in one of your memos that.
I think it was, if I could jump in, I think if I even refresh, what I'm remembering is basically that you had to, to be a little bit more strict with your deadline for closing out the fiscal year.
Yes.
I think that's what it was for the auditor piece or whatever. So it's just, it's just going out to the departments and saying, look, I've got to have these by a date certain or.
And we were this year.
Our new auditors.
Apply to this at all, or am I confusing two separate topics?
Uh, not really, not really, but our new auditors, uh, are pretty firm in the fact that I need to close the books thirty days after the end of the fiscal year, which that has not been the case. And that process this year made it so much easier for me, instead of carrying it out sixty, ninety days, whatever it had been.
Yeah.
Right, so closing the books out thirty days.
It minimizes a lot of mistakes too, or just confusion of having to read two separate books.
Holds the department heads accountable to a certain standard too, that they're getting, that they're getting that information to me in time to have them paid out of that prior fiscal year.
Is, do we do any sort of training for our department heads on how to submit these things in a, in a proper timely manner? Or we just rely on?
Not really, but there should be.
If that, I, I'm not telling you to do anything, but if Rick came to me or us the board and said, hey, you know, we'd like to start doing some financial one-on-one classes with the finance director and department heads, I would say rock on. Just, because I, I know it's one of those things, when you're a public works director, just using that as an example, you, you deal in a certain realm and, you know, dealing with this stuff is just a little bit different than your kind of day-to-day activities. So giving all department heads more tools and being able to close these books quicker and more accurately, I just think is a good thing.
It's, it, I don't know if it's training is required or it's just me saying to them.
Encouragement.
Yeah, me saying you have to have it done.
Here's the policy.
Right.
Here's the deadline.
Here's the deadline, and we did that this year.
Yeah, but I also feel like, you know, telling someone you got to get it done and then maybe not just gently whispering and saying, are you, do you feel like you can do this totally cool or do you want? I just don't see how some additional level of spreadsheet manipulation, training or projections or whatever, I just don't see it as a bad idea, but that's just my two cents.
Okay, encumbrances.
So, for most of you, this is new, but, uh, some of these things are older. Uh, every year you have to vote on new and prior encumbrances if you want to continue to carry over old encumbrances. In the memo, I included, uh, my recommendations on whether or not they should be included. And on the new ones, I included the reasons why the department heads wanted them, uh, to be encumbered. So for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, um, there is money, uh, that was encumbered, thirty-nine thousand fifty-five dollars and thirty-one cents.
Thirty-nine thousand or?
Three nine hundred.
Thirty-nine hundred, sorry.
Okay.
Um, for the West Rockport Fire Station, I would recommend carrying this over, uh, simply because no decision has been reached yet about the West Rockport Fire Station. And this can go along with that bond money.
I just want to stop you for a minute and explain to the new board members, basically the, and some of you are probably familiar with this, but an encumbrance, in my opinion, and then I think Megan reinforced this last time, is, is money that was budgeted for a, a prior fiscal year but not spent. And usually because of little things like, the work may have been done, but the bill didn't come in until after the end of the fiscal year or the work was planned and it's going to be done a little bit later. Um, so basically there ha- in my opinion, there has to be a purpose that that money was put in the budget for. Yes, we put it in the budget, we didn't quite get the project done, we're going to get it done and so we're going to take that budgeted money and, and bring it over to the next year. We had a situation a few years ago, in fact, when I was first on the board, where there were a lot of encumbrances being carried from year to year for stuff that had long, its purpose had long been passed and I, and I, I think it was last year when Megan was here and I sort of said, do we really need this? And we, we cut out a whole bunch of them or whatever. So when we consider these, in my opinion, we need to be looking at, you know, is this money that was dedicated in the prior budget for a particular purpose? We still are going to use it for that purpose, we just haven't got around to it yet. As opposed to saying, oh, we got some extra money left over, let's, let's carry it forward, we might find a way to spend it in the future instead of giving it back to the taxpayers. So we're tackling these one by one then? Well, we'll go through them and, and I think the suggested motion we have is to approve them all, but we don't have to do that.
Yeah.
We can, we can discuss them amongst ourselves and see and go with Megan's recommendations. On your comment, I was just thinking that it's been there three years and we're going into the fourth year that it's been there, the thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Money that's like a hundred thousand or something that's.
A hundred and twenty, where at a hundred and twenty?
Yeah, I mean, this is like peanuts.
And Megan, walk us through where this money goes if we do not encumber it back to the UFB?
And I would just like to add to Ken's comment, I would like to see us stop carrying things over for multiple years because it is a lot of record-keeping on my end to keep carrying these things over.
Alright.
How does, um, your auditors, how do they feel about this? What are, what are their, like, how long you should keep it?
So like Ken said, the purpose of technically encumbering something is to fund something that had been expended but not paid for yet. The reason that I am recommending carrying over this money for the West Rockport Fire Station is because your intention is to make improvements to the building within the next year. So I could see that this money would be spent within the next year.
Do we know what this money was part of or intended for back then? Well, I mean, the, the West Rockport Fire Station, this renovation of the roof and the extension of the bay has been on budgeted for several years and. I'm just saying, you know, was that?
This may have been money left over just in the building improvement line, which is a general, a general line.
Alright.
But we, we're, we have a, this very specific project in mind. I mean, it would make sense.
Can I ask another question? And that is, so you have your, your recommendations, oh, these are Rick's recommendations.
No, these are Megan's.
Megan's.
Two Rick.
Oh, I'm sorry, two Rick, yeah.
She and I have agreed on these.
And that's totally cool, and I'm not saying that you all are not right, um, but you did, did you talk to the Opera House? Did you talked to, to Terry or the folks about having it go to the UFB or staying? Or is it just your and Rick's opinion?
Just.
Uh, we, yeah, we have budgeted enough money to cover their wages.
Now, this, this Opera House one is, is a really good example. We budgeted a bunch of money for, for the part-time employee, we didn't spend it all.
Right.
We budgeted more money this year, so this money that wasn't spent last year should go back into the UFB, in my opinion. That's a perfect example of, of an encumbrance that doesn't need to be made.
And I completely agree with that, I was just curious if, if department heads are.
Of course, they're, department heads are going to want to keep all the money they can.
Well, I mean, I think that if.
I mean, they can make an argument if there's, but I think, uh, and it depends on the project.
Jeez, if I had known that there was sidewalk money, we would have spent that sidewalk money.
Let's march on with explanation and stuff. Yeah, I think it would be good rather than, you know.
Okay, so the next one is the town office web design for nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. I'd recommend letting this lapse into the unassigned fund balance, because that's not going to get you much web design and there's no real clear direction on what's going to happen with the website at this time.
And I, and on that note, I think I just signed today a warrant for web work. I think there was a check for somebody for web work.
For the Opera House.
Okay.
That was for their new civic rec. That was for their new civic rec system. Uh, so we already discussed the Opera House part-time employee, uh, piece. Uh, the cemetery software license for just over nineteen-hundred dollars. I would recommend keeping this in there, because the project does need to be completed, but I would like to encourage the select board to put a end date to this project, so that it will be completed. Um, Parks and Rec sidewalk construction, uh, just over two-thousand dollars. I know that there's, uh, been lengthy, uh, discussions about sidewalks in town. Uh, so if you feel that this money could be put to good use, then I could see that this could be carried over as well.
Can that be used for maintenance as well as new construction?
Yes.
But engineering work, no?
Uh, the, no.
Where I'm going, I think, Doug, I don't know where your maintenance is, but where the, the little jet out is on Main Street, just up from the bridge heading to the Town Office, there are two of those concrete slabs that are deteriorating.
Believe me, they're everywhere. Where, where the, where the park goes around the parking spaces?
Right.
Yep.
When, when it hugs the road and then it jets in-
Yep.
There are two of those squares that are deteriorating quite badly, so perhaps that might be something that-
I would love to move on, what I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out to the Pathways Committee and just see if they, in some of the information they have, already have some defined areas, and then I'll just bring it to the board, and if it's not what you all want, then we'll move from there.
Oh, I think if we, if we encumber this money, then it's up to Rick to, to determine where it's spent, basically. If it goes back in the budget under, in that line, and so we just know we have the money there to spend it.
Oh, yeah, and all I was saying was, the Pathways people, you know-
They may have some ideas.
They have sidewalk studies.
It's not a huge amount of money, I think Megan's comment that we do need to ensure that it's spent, we need to ensure that that money, that money gets used for its purpose.
Uh, so the next item is from the fifteen, sixteen budget, uh, it's for the Conservation Commission for fifteen-hundred dollars. Uh, this was for the issues at Goody's Beach, uh, with conversations with Jamie. Uh, there is still some work that needs to be done with this engineering study, it was with Gartley and Dorsky that the work was being done. Um, I would recommend carrying this over for another year with the issues that have been at Goody's Beach, but again, I'd like to see this money spent and-
Yeah. I think if we come back with this next year, that we would say, "Forget it," um, because, uh, by then we'll know a lot more about what's going on.
We'll have a whole year of data, a whole season of data now.
Uh, so the next item is the new request for the sixteen, seventeen fiscal year. Uh, first is Public Works, uh, to encumber sixty-five thousand five-hundred-and-forty dollars from the road construction line. Um, this money has been, uh, the work had been completed, but we had not received the invoices in time for me to close out the fiscal year. Um, equipment rent, same thing, uh, they had, uh, rented a roller for Rockport Woods, we had not received the invoice within the thirty-day timeframe to get that paid.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That number is different than the hundred- The, the total, the sixty-nine thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-seven, with the road construction and equipment rental put together, is less than what's remaining in Public Works' budget.
Right, 'cause he had other lines that weren't completely extended, but we didn't need to encumber them.
That's just what's left over at the end.
Right.
And because they choose not, or the recommendation is not to encumber it, whatever's left over goes right into the U F B.
Right.
Whatever we don't encumber goes into the U F B.
Okay, cool.
Um, so with that, with those two encumbrances, the department will end the year with a remaining balance of sixty-nine thousand dollars.
So that'll go into the U F B?
Correct. Uh, the next is for Parks and Rec, uh, the request is to encumber seventeen hundred dollars and seven, one thousand seven, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars to repair the lion kill, uh, closest to the Harbor Masters Building, uh, which is in desperate need of repair, um-
The estimate for that is about six, isn't it?
Six thousand, yeah.
Somewhere around there.
Money in this year's budget?
There was not enough money, uh, ending the year to encumber all of that, uh, so we encumbered enough to make that department zero for the year.
You have to have a certain amount of money to actually encumber it?
You can't overdraw the, the bottom line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh, for the Opera House, uh, this plays into what Mark was just talking about, the web hosting and design, uh, forty-two, four thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, uh, to assist in the purchasing of an online credit card, uh, processing system for Opera House rentals. Um, with this encumbrance, the remaining budget will be thirteen thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents, which will go into the U F B. For the library, the request is to encumber the money for the engineering study, which is thirteen thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents. This money will help cover the cost of the survey and other, other, any other costs associated with the new library project. Um, with this encumbrance, it will leave the remaining budget at forty-two thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. But remember, the majority of this money would have been reimbursed by the Library Committee, so not all of that would be rolled into the U F B. Uh, for R E S East, for recreation equipment, the request is to encumber three thousand six-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, this money would be used to purchase the new backstop for the baseball field. Uh, the remaining money needed to purchase the equipment, I, when I wrote this, I thought it was in the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year budget, but recently I looked and that money had been taken out of the budget.
Cut out of the budget.
Yeah, I feel like we, we were kinda thinking we would do halvesies with, if we got our act together, we would try to go halves with private donations.
What is the total that that might be?
About seven thousand.
What's that number?
Okay.
So with that encumbrance request, the remaining balance would be zero, and then the totals are there.
And that total is, just using the recommendations that we've made, you've made through here?
The recommendations I made to keep.
Right, okay, so the one-on-one, two-sixty-one-ninety-seven is just the ones that you recommended to keep.
Right.
If you wanna eliminate any others, that will, um, change that number.
Not that it's late, and not that it's been a long, current, now, the number that we were originally talking about to bring us up to sixteen percent, is that the two-fifty-seven that would go in?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think Megan's recommendations are, uh, spot on, quite honestly, um, and I'm glad to see, like I say, in previous years, I think a lot of these things would have just been recommended for encumbrances, and I think Megan has shown a lot of good discretion in saying, "Well, we need to encumber this, but this we're gonna let lapse," and things like that, so I'm, I'm comfortable with, with her recommendations.
I'd encourage, uh, you know, some form of not seeing the thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, or fifteen, sixteen for next year. I mean, I-
Yeah, I agree, I think, uh, some of the, and some of those, I mean, the West Rockport Fire Station is an outlier, because that's been, that's been a football, it's been bounced around for a lot of years, and, and we eventually have to get the work done out there, but I, I totally agree that the-
I don't mind keeping it a year, but we've got three different years.
Uh, but it's, certainly we wanna start to shave off those really old ones, I think, in the future, but I think the arguments that Megan put forth for, for keeping the ones that she did makes sense to me.
I move to encumber one-hundred-one thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents for the project list as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion?
Uh, yes, actually, a bit of an amendment to take the remainder of that and put it into the U S B, uh, undesignated fund balance.
I don't, that's not necessary.
Oh, it isn't, all right, well.
It automatically goes in.
It automatically does, all right.
If there is funds left in the budget, whatever, so, you know, so we don't, that will happen.
Yep.
And my only last parting comments was because you were here and the board is here, and we're, it seems to be some pretty decent agreement that we are gonna try to not have this strung out for so long. Um, at some point, maybe we could talk about a formal policy on, you know, years out from then, and then turn things into priorities or whatever, but if you wanted to give some thought to an appropriate year buffer, you know, to, to make sure that we're cutting these things off, so it would help us shape a policy if we were to do something that said, if an encumbrance has been there for two consecutive years, you have one last year to spend it, or I don't know.
I think we made really good strides last year in cutting all the stuff out that we did. I think, um, the things that are, are left, as long as hard deadlines are set for the older things, and if they're not accomplished by the end of the fiscal year, then they're just lapsed into the U F B.
And I think the problem with, with-
I think Rick's in agreement with that.
I understand where you're coming from, but the tough part about it is, is these things are all very individual, um, and it's, it's hard to classify, just because something is three years old, that you wanna let it lapse, and in some cases you don't, in some cases, something that's a year old, you don't wanna keep, so it's, it's hard. Okay, we have the motion on the table, any further discussion on the motion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous vote. Megan, terrific work.
Thanks.
Thank you, it's really, really a good job. And for, for those who are watching at home, and Megan's the last one here, and, uh, she's doing a lot of work on behalf of, of your tax dollars, that's for sure. Okay, uh, we don't have any wastewater business tonight, uh, we do not have an executive session, because the personnel matter is not ready for presentation of the board just quite yet. Uh, so we have liaison reports. Anybody wanna kick off there?
I went to the ordinance review committee meeting, was I a liaison there, or was I a member?
Ordinance review? No, that was a workshop.
Workshop, never mind that, it was interesting.
I'm the liaison to that.
All right.
My, but you can feel free to comment on it if you want to.
It was interesting.
My, my parks was pretty well laid out by, uh, Dave earlier. Uh, the capital improvement, uh, people are meeting again tomorrow, and, um, I'm in hopes to be back from Falmouth to attend that by then, but-
Are they gonna be ready for the October twelfth workshop, is that a realistic date for them?
That's where we're getting to, I think, tomorrow, I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken.
And that's, uh, back to my comment to you, Tom, that's scheduled for five, would we be, would five-thirty be better for you?
Five-thirty would make it a little easier.
Okay, why don't we pass that word along and push that to five-thirty, just so time-
I should be, I should be out of there by two tomorrow afternoon, so I should be back in time for that.
Okay.
Library Committee met recently, just last week, I had a meeting at work, I wasn't able to attend, and the minutes are not out. Opera House Committee, uh, will not meet until October night.
Um, for the Pathways, um, not any sort of huge updates, uh, glad that you all got the connector trail thing, um, for Beach Hill. Um, there's also gonna be the Beach to Beach, uh, that I don't actually remember if it's on the same day or not. Um, but, uh, Pathways was able to secure, um, a crew of inmates from the farm in Warren, and the, these inmates that we have been able to secure for some projects around our general community Camden and Rockport have been phenomenally beneficial to our towns, they've been cleaning up trash on the side of the road.
Right.
Um, and they, I, I showed up twenty minutes after we were supposed to get there, and all the work was almost done. Great group of individuals, um, and it's difficult to get them, but we will also have a crew cleaning up, um, Route seventeen tomorrow, uh, in conjunction with the kind of bigger Keep Rockport Beautiful effort, on the Keep Rockport Beautiful effort, um, I forget how many hundreds of pounds they've collected already, but it's not even to there, this upcoming weekend is the big weekend. Um, uh, I would encourage all select board members to reach out, um, to these folks and get your proper gear, and either Friday or Saturday, work your road, uh, I'll be working South Street, and, um-
I think it was twenty-six-hundred pounds, I think.
Yeah.
And we haven't even, and we haven't even done our big weekend push yet, um-
It's sadness in one way.
Yeah, well, and these, we've been doing bi-annual roadside cleanups for two years now.
Yeah, it's not like it's-
So it's amazing how quickly it builds up.
It's spring and su, it's spring and fall.
Um, the Recreation Committee totally, totally dropped the ball on that, them meeting in the mornings has really kinda messed me up, and, um, I need to reach out to them, uh, with the Solid Waste Corporation. Um, Beth, uh, can't pronounce her last name, is kind of the acting director- Kowalski?
Kowalski.
Kowalski is kind of the acting director, um, as Jim takes, uh, a, a leave for some, um, health reasons. And that said, we are very confident in moving some of our projects forward. Um, you may have noticed that there was some talk about our mixed plastics and, um, maybe some direction to start putting your mixed plastics in with your trash. We are advising against that, uh, basically, we are assessing the mis, mixed plastic market, and we'll try to have that figured out, and for the, um, comprehensive, uh, kind of, not site plan review, but the reorganization of the, um, facility itself is progressing, and we'll have some updates on that, the meeting is Wednesday, but there's been, um, a lot of really interesting, um, stuff happening around there, and yeah, uh, the, um, middle school, or the middle school project, the middle school, what's the name of the committee that I'm on? Building Committee.
Mary Taylor Building Committee.
Well, we won't, we won't call it the Mary Taylor Building Committee.
The Building Committee.
Right, right.
Uh, they are moving along, they have set some, uh, aggressive timeframes, um, I know that there was, there, there's some height requirements that they're trying to see if they can't get a special exemption for, um, but they are setting pretty, uh, aggressive timelines to, to get the project started. That, things seem to be progressing nicely, and, um, it was great to see Anastasia Fisher there, um, the meetings are, are pretty well attended, and I will try to keep you all updated on timelines and breaking ground, and not all of this stuff really applies to us, other than our tax dollars.
Did you have a comment, or?
I'm gonna wait till you're done with yours, and then I was gonna ask Rick a question.
Okay. Um, Legacy Rockport, uh, did meet this past month, and they are a big part of, of this actually, because Legacy Rockport helped to raise a lot of money to complete that trail connector up the hill there, and it's good, because the group is getting a little bit more organized and feeling what they can do, it's a, it's a powerful group, and it was, it was devised by the previous comprehensive plan, and it took a lot of work to get them their five-on-one C-three status, but now they can act as a pass-through, a financial pass-through for any projects that benefit the town of Rockport, and people can donate money through them, and it's a tax-deductible donation, because they're a five-on-one C-three, so. That group is starting to get a little more active again, which is really good, um, the O R C workshop was, uh, earlier, it was last week, I guess, I think the time's all messed up.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we will have the O R C work plan on our October tenth agenda to go through, uh, had a good discussion, Doug was there, um, about several issues having to do with the land use ordinance, uh, looking at the mini-storage issue again, uh, looking at, uh, cleaning up some definitions, uh, I'm blanking on some of the other things, but you'll see them all in the, uh-
Road, never road.
Uh, the road acceptance ordinance was a little, fairly low priority, I, I had suggested that, and looking at that again, and there may be some work to do that, but, uh, some other issues. And it looks like a, a, a very manageable work plan this year, as opposed to previous years, where it had been a little bit, uh, too ambitious, I think, so that's where I stand right now.
My question is, do we have, do we have any tentative dates for our joint meeting with Camden coming up?
I was gonna bring that up.
I haven't talked to them, I gotta talk to John about that, and-
They're supposed to be reaching out to you, I talked with John today.
Yeah, that's-
I've been rattling John's cage, yeah.
I mean, originally, at the beginning of the year, I had wanted them to get their feet under them with a new board and a new manager, and, and I've heard now that they are-
Right.
Doing pretty well, so, um-
I'll, um, reach out to-
If you will reach out to Audrey, and I, I gotta see John this weekend anyway, 'cause I gotta get a sticker, so. I'll talk to him about it, and we'll see where we can go with that, but we do have issues to talk about there, the ongoing police cooperation.
Well, the big one is gonna be the wastewater stuff, it's-
Right, yeah, and see where they are with that, uh, because they had said that they would keep us informed on that.
When I talked with John, he wanted it, 'cause one of our last joint meetings was at the wastewater plant, and we toured it and talked about, that's a big thing that's gonna be coming down, it's a known, but we just don't have a good timeline on it yet, but that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Um, what's up with, I know we're not discussing it tonight-
I'm probably gonna put that on in October, the Tolman Pond Dam situation, I'm probably gonna put that on the agenda in October.
Did anyone map Geo that? I did before I came, whoa. It's a, it's a very unique parcel with a lot of interesting stuff.
So anyway, that'll be a discussion item, and, and also, the, uh, the other folks that have come to us are the, uh, the folks who own the Rockville Chapel. Um, they would like to donate that to the town also, because, uh, the people who did a lot of work on restoring that, and the group that's, that's involved with it is, is mostly elderly people now, and they feel like they, they aren't gonna be able to manage it, and it would be a shame. I don't know if any of you have been out there and seen the restoration, it's beautiful.
They did a nice job.
It's a, it's a sweet little building.
It really is, um, and it would be a shame for it to, to fall into disrepair or whatever, because-
I've heard there's a stained glass of- I've heard there's a stained glass of Captain John Leach off in the corner that I have not yet seen.
But it's a, it's a beautiful building, so anyway, um, at some point, maybe not in October, at some point I'm gonna reach out to them. They've asked to come and talk to the Select Board about that, and I'll get that on a, a future agenda as well, so. And, uh, I just wanna say, my final comment, I thought that the board as a whole did a terrific job with this dangerous building situation this evening. I thought the discussion was very good, and I thought, uh, we came to a reasonable resolution, so congratulations to the board on that.
If I could keep my gum out of my mouth and talk straight, I'd be alright.
Uh, Planning Board and Harbor Committee both meet this week, I believe, if the calendar's up to date. So, I'll have a report on that. Um, Maggie Timmerman has me signed up for Union Street and Grove Street with a roadside cleanup, so I'll be leading a group there.
I think you're gonna be gone.
No, it actually turned out I'm not, so, yeah, so I am.
Start picking now.
And then finally, again, I'll be talking to Ken about Maggie, getting Maggie on the agenda, uh, for our next Select Board meeting to talk about the Keep Rockport Beautiful program.
Okay. Um, and you, you're the Conservation Commission liaison, I can't remember.
No.
Yeah.
Marcus.
Okay. Um, we have an, a tentative water quality workshop for later in October, can you find out if they still wanna do that or not, or if there's? I know last, the last couple of years, we've had it scheduled, and, and Bob Kennedy or somebody has come along and said, you know, there's nothing new to report, so we don't necessarily need it. But if you could check on that and let me know, that'd be good.
Yep. And one thing on, um, on Doug's, um, initiative, again, I, I fully support it, I think it's, it's great. Um, you know, I wa- I wanna help in any way that I can. One thing that I've been thinking about is, um, you may not necessarily have to put as much time, energy, and effort into starting up your own group, because underneath the Conservation Commission, and already allocated money in our budgetary process, is Keep Rockport Beautiful. So, um, I just wanted to throw that out there as a way of incorporating some of the people that you've, you've been having these discussions in. And it just may be an easier lift to still get to your end goal by funneling that energy into that existing subcommittee that we have under Conservation. And if that's something that, um, you do have a, a strong interest in, I don't know about, um, Doug and Mark changing liaison, um, appointments. But having Doug be on possibly Parks and Conservation Commission puts you liaising with the two different groups who kind of are dedicated to monitoring our open spaces, keeping things clean, and looking for environmental issues. And it was just something I've been thinking about, I, I wanna, uh, to help and, and see that successful vision, just in the easiest way that we can.
Sure, and, and I'm happy to be liaison and everything, but, you know, we'll let Maggie do her presentation, and I think this is gonna be a freestanding project, so.
Well, and I think it's, I think the value of what, and I haven't talked to you directly about it, but I think the value of what you're doing is you're gonna be coordinating a few different groups to do exactly what Owen suggests, is to say, okay, what can this group do, what can that group do?
And the ultimate is, because it's a Select Board goal, number four on the list, so.
Okay. Alrighty, do you have anything else?
Kum ba yam.
I heard a motion to adjourn in a second.
Kum ba.
All in favor? Thank you.
Everyone sign the birthday stuffs?
Yeah, you were the last one.
I was the last one, cool.
Want us to sign the, uh.
I don't think we have anything else to sign.
Oh, do we?